I think it's still Carl.
All right, um, please, the order, we try to enable for five. Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
You've delivered a pledge of allegiance, one nation, under God, indivisible, with no end.
This meeting is called pursuant to provisions of the Open Public Meeting Law, this meeting on April second, twenty twenty five. Plus, it was a bulletin board for a hall and edition copy of this meeting. But if you notice, it has been available to the public and it is in on file in the office of the Borough Clerk. Uh, roll call, please.
Councilman, uh, Councilman Arias.
Here.
Uh, so, uh, Councilwoman, uh, Eva Hart, here, Councilwoman Lozaro, here, Councilwoman Lovett.
Here.
Council Vice President Ong.
There.
Council President Parker.
Here.
And Mayor Kara.
Here.
Okay. Uh, the purpose of this meeting tonight is for a work session to discuss, uh, additional budget requests made by the council, uh, made from departments and working commissions by the council, um, which were submitted to our CFO on or before the thirty first of March. Um, the CFO did send out a budget indicating with these requests, the budget was going to go up a hundred ninety five thousand dollars. Actually, we increased two and a half cents, uh, over what he originally, uh, submitted at zero percent. Um, so they lay before you and, um, it's mostly in, uh, what I would dress, I would term the emergency services fields. But there are some and others as well. We have two, um, boards that actually went down in their budgets, environmental and planning board. Um, other than that, uh, a number of them stayed same. Uh, there were a few slight increases due to inflationary costs. But then there was some extraordinary requests, so, um, what Bill gave us tonight does not have the cool, nice, neat little highlights we had from when he sent us online, um. So, um, I'm not really sure how to start with just because if it was the egg was, I would personally say, let's go do a review, Bill, and go back to the twenty fourth of March and just put that in, but that's not, I'm not the ones making the cuts tonight. I can talk about some of them and make suggestions, but the council asked you this, so a hundred ninety five thousand dollars with the cuts under state law. They didn't counsel script. So you want to start with, um, start with, start with the bill.
So before you start, let's be very clear of why we did this. Because there was not a process in place. That's why we did it. We went back to make sure that we got a process in place based upon a con- con- based upon a conversation that we had with Bill. So we're going to do the budget right, and if this is where it is, then we will look to say what is not proper and what is proper. To get back to where we need to be. But at the end of the day, when I see things going down and some things going up, but a lot of things coming down, that raises a flag in my head to say, yes, that's why we need to do this process. That's, I just want to make that clear. Okay.
That's fine. I mean, the plan for budget went down twenty five hundred dollars.
I'm just, I'm just putting that out.
Environmental was that four, you had two that went down, but. So let's start with, the councilman was smart to have to print out the highlighted one. I don't have the highlighted one, so you you wanted to just walk us through the things that went up and we can talk about, you know, the ones that you highlighted, Bill, um, and you can just let us know where they are for those of us that didn't print out a copy.
Um, so the clerk, Eli, went up to twenty four dollars and then from eighteen, uh, now it's because of, I guess you were anticipating additional costs.
You didn't care, you didn't even do the microphone.
I guess you were anticipating the additional costs for, uh, code and stuff like that.
Yeah, the E-code, elections. It's time to do the administrative code update. It always costs a couple of thousands of dollars. Land or. It's at least a thousand, a couple of thousands, right? What was the other one?
Elections, they seem to go up. I didn't call Mary to get a number, but I, well.
And so this doesn't include things like cost of paper going up?
I'm sorry, can, can, can I interrupt for a minute? What page are you going to go to?
The first page.
First page.
Current fund, that, right?
Under clerk, it's twenty four thousand, so the highlight didn't show up on the copier?
It's there like.
There it is. So that's six K entries.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, sorry to interrupt, thank you.
So Carl, let's say that again. So it went from eighteen to twenty four. So tell me why it went from eighteen to twenty four?
Um, like I said, is, this is for, what are we on? Other expenses, I guess?
Yeah.
Okay, so E-code, that's all the ordinances.
What is E-code, I'm sorry?
All the ordinances on the, um,
Okay.
On the, um, website.
Okay.
Um, um, oh my gosh, um, elections.
Okay.
Um, do you have my budget that, um, well, I just gave you a number.
When you say elections, what does that really mean? What does that mean to elections?
We have to pay there for, um, doing, printing the ballots.
Okay.
Here, you're lucky because you use this room, but the church, the church has not asked us for money yet, but some of the churches do. Um, so a lot, they, the county bills us for them, for the elections.
Okay.
Is it because it's a gubernatorial election here that you're trying to be more.
Make yourself better here.
The, the, the funding.
Yeah, yeah.
I didn't know if that was the, that was like a special reason.
It might be a little, but it does go up.
Who pays the actual coworkers?
Board of elections.
I love this state.
What?
I said, I love this state.
Maybe three hundred dollars at the end for the way. Um, email for, um, off, well, I don't know if he has office supply somewhere else, um, conferences, um.
Yeah, you asked, I know you asked for a little bit more for conferences.
Yeah, conferences.
Conferences for yourself.
For myself, like next week I'll be at the clerk's conference.
Okay.
At my, all my C.
I mean, it's all viable, but I just, it's just that I don't think we all, I don't think any of us knew what this was all about.
Yeah, I'm just thinking off the top of my head, but.
Thank you.
What all this stuff is.
So, but originally it was eighteen five, yeah, when he first put that.
And I did like two percent or whatever, just to cover, who's to say I'm gonna spend that much money?
But it's gonna have it in the budget.
Like when you do a PA, you do it a little higher.
Yeah.
But the eighteen five, that's not a number you gave. The twenty four is the number you gave, right?
Right, yes. Last year was eighteen.
And did you spend that?
I don't know, you asked, Bill.
Um, I'll show you a quick summary. Of how they're spending sold. Last year it was eighteen thousand, and you came in at seventeen nine thirty nine eighty three. Sixteen thousand in twenty twenty three, it was fifteen nine ninety. So you can see on that second line, for pretty much one, two, three, past three years, the expenses have gone up and I would anticipate more. Paper's gonna be more expensive now.
Well, the, the expenses went up, but did we, you know, that's, that wasn't good. That wasn't the question. The question was, did you spend the eighteen?
Just underneath, just under.
Okay, I'm not looking at the sheet, that's what I'm asking.
Yeah, just, I'm aware, but we never know. We could have emergency.
No, I, perfectly understandable, I'm just asking a question.
Yeah. Bill, that's okay.
I can't fire that, I answered everything.
It's okay, it's okay, I think, I think we got it.
Yeah, and right, Bill, who's to say I would spend the twenty four thousand? Yeah, unless like our office falls apart and I need.
So, so every year, Carla, you spent just slightly under the budget request, you're going up a couple of thousand every year. It's been increased and you stayed in that.
Right.
So can you live with twenty thousand instead of twenty four?
Last year it was what, seventeen, you said, seventeen?
That's what I'm trying to understand.
Cause that's why I keep asking what was actually spent? And what was actually spent, it wasn't eighteen thousand.
Right, so I usually.
That's my question. So it was eighteen thousand and it went from sixteen to eighteen, that's two thousand dollars. You know, but of an increase, and so now we've gone from another two thousand dollars to almost, what is it?
Six, yeah, yeah, so, I guess that's fine.
But then we'll put a question over there, cause we know that we. Okay.
Four thousand, Carla, I have a question about the E-code.
Yeah.
I know we've had some issues with that particular service in the past. Are they treating each better this year? Are you getting the better service than yet last year?
And I have a contact now that I feel with directly.
I just wanted to make sure that what we're paying for is worth it. I know that was a problem in the past, but I'm glad to hear it.
Yeah. I have one contact that, there goes.
So Carla says she can live with twenty thousand, the council president put a question mark on it. Um, I'm gonna say twenty.
Hey, the next one, Bill? Good question.
And, oh, wait.
No, there's one that says something about municipal law, useful, is that?
Municipal land use law.
Yeah, that's, yeah.
So I, I think my thing is cut off here.
Oh, here.
Well, I just get the print on mine, you're right.
You have color, that's very nice.
Right, well, that's how I'm going.
My favorite guy tonight. So.
So, so we, so what is this, why is this highlighted?
It went from fifty thousand to forty two thousand five fifty, so we got.
And they, that's because they didn't spend, they spent under forty five thousand last year. But they spent below their budget last year, so they have to afford basically what they spent.
Correct.
But Karen was able, Karen was able to shave a little bit more off just to be the instructor.
Well, it's also because, I mean, there, yeah, I mean, there was one year where almost every single person, it was like five people had to get classes, take classes, so.
Or at least the pilot for the two, well, appointment was still carrying board and that forty two five fifty because I'll have to take the classes.
So, it's, I mean, what's in the forty two, so it's for classes and what else? Just out of our, just so that we know. Cause I know nothing about it.
It's.
So what's in the forty two bill? Like, what is that?
So, so the salaries and wages is just the secretary.
Understood that, we're asking about the forty two.
It's your planner, your engineer, the traffic engineer, the attorney, for all the work they don't do under S-broad, which is, you know, work that they do for the planning board. So like last year, they wrote the checklist, right, this big checklist to keep us, to get the town into compliance, to get better information from, um, applicants who were threatening lawsuits if we didn't just automatically do them complete because we didn't have a checklist. Um, planning board had been arguing over a checklist for years. So last year, a lot of work was done to get a checklist in place, the Borough Council passed the ordinance to update the checklist ordinance in our E-code. And, um, so that work is paid for by the borough, it's our, the, the planning board, it's not paid by Espro from applicants.
Dude, that's last year, what about this year? What does this make up for this year?
It's for, it's the pushing for anything the planning board does.
Yeah.
It's got enough.
But what do we anticipate that the planning board is gonna do?
That's what I found from Karen, I can go through it.
Thank you.
Okay, historical commission zero, office supplies one hundred, conference meetings, trainings, a hundred and fifty. We actually increased that because we have two now, right?
Three.
Three, okay, so that's gonna be an increase. Membership fees dues five hundred in line with previous spend.
That's the engine.
Yeah, uh, legal, I'm sorry, yes. It shouldn't have, but, okay, so legal.
I'm sorry, I'm saying just to let me keep association.
Let me go through it. So legal eleven thousand, lower than previously requested, but in line with the actual spend last year. Similar workload is expected this year. Engineer twelve thousand dollars, lower than previously requested, but in line with actual spend and similar workload expected this year. Other professional, eighteen thousand, higher than previously requested, but in line with last year's actual spend. Total for all profession, professionals is forty one thousand, which overall is lower than last year's request of forty three thousand and in line with the actual spend of thirty nine thousand five hundred thirty three dollars and fifteen cents. Postage, zero dollars, in line with previous years. Advertising five hundred, in line with previous years, and based on current expected workload requiring advertising, that's how you get a total of forty two thousand five hundred, which is lower than last year's of forty five thousand. Regarding the advertising, that's like for the notices, if I'm correct, so we have to, we have to do those. There's no way around it.
Um, I have another thing for me, it's notices.
Still going back to legal.
Yeah, the notices did go, that's right, because we have fewer.
So we're hoping that they change it where we could post it on our website.
That would be wonderful if we can do that, so we haven't even got to the newspapers. I'm always having newspapers now, right? There's no newspapers now.
Well, the courier, that's what I'm used and.
But is that staying?
I don't know, but I gotta pay the bucks, you know, I believe it.
Can we get a subscription to the courier so you don't have to pay for an affidavit?
Sure.
Like, wouldn't that be cheaper?
I could email them. They send the affidavit, um, if I ask for it or not.
And they don't charge? Cause I know some places charge like fifty dollars for an affidavit.
No, she said it was my notice.
Okay.
Wow, cause I like that affidavit in my buyer, right, yeah. I'll have to email her then and see.
There's a clause.
So Bill, did other, like, as I look through this line item, should everybody be able to do what I just did? Karen couldn't complete it, so everybody else up here will be able to do what I just did, correct?
We're gonna do what you just did.
Going right through line by line.
Line item by line item.
Okay, perfect.
So I'm still gonna go back to this, cause I don't think I heard an answer, unless I missed it. But I hear the, the professional fees, I understand, but if it's, if it went up for legal, what are we anticipating is gonna be happening? Cause obviously, are there projects that are coming up that you, that is gonna, that is gonna cost more? I'm just trying to understand what's on the dock. Is that an unreasonable question?
Well, I have, uh, I, when you're done, I.
No, I'm just asking if it's an unreasonable question, I'm just asking the question.
Like if there, like if there's planned expense, like, you know, like, oh, we know, you know, we want to tackle this list of things.
It's, there's not a list of things, this is what.
No, I mean, like.
One of the things I want to do is look at the signboard, and so everybody wants the signboard.
That's the kind of thing.
That's the thingy, he's getting that signboard, and they know that they also want to meet with the bylaws because, um, like, I'm, myself and my campaign, we're all browsing about this eleven o'clock stop, and wanna have no testimony start, you know, after nine thirty at night, the way we're in township does it, that's a bylaws change, so that's required, so, you know, we, if we're gonna open up the bylaws, we're gonna look at other stuff as well for the bylaws, so that's, that's Kara's time. So those are the kinds of things that I know, um, are on the list.
And of course, the, uh, other issues may arise throughout the course of the year that need to be tackled or dealt with.
Yeah, but that's independent, that's independent, right, I'm just asking you what.
When the, when the, remember the council, when the council sends down ordinance like we did with the, um, distillery ordinance recently, that comes out of that, their budget, because you don't have an Espro account.
But, but that was unplanned. I was asking about plan, but you just answered my question, so that's the question. I'm just, I'm just trying to understand what's the makeup of this barring any emergencies. So, for instance, I had, that's, I had fit go through and give us every project they're gonna work on, and when you look at their budget, it is absolutely spelled out by project. That's what I'm asking.
So that's what I'm saying.
But, but it's okay, I heard, but I, I just heard, but there are projects that may cost more money to have, because it's more legal. That's all I'm asking, I don't think that's a hard question.
But council president, when you said at the, one of the last meetings, that the play, that the council is going to do some zoning, it still requires under the law, the planning board to review it. We don't have an Espro account that we pay them back.
Okay, but that's fine, then zoning is a part of the project.
Yes.
So then save the zoning as well. That's all, that's all good. It's all good.
Can I, can I maybe reboard the question a little bit differently? Um, it, when you, when we moved from the budget of forty to forty five last year, one of the things, um, uh, you guys had said was the, one of the goals was to review, um, the, you know, the, the ordinance. And you spent time and subcommittee doing that. Um, the, the list of goals this year, um, a lot of times, um, well, I don't know if, I don't know if, I mean, did this for you guys, but every year she usually gives like a summary of, um, of all the different things that happened, you know, during the year, and whether it was like, yeah, and then.
That was done, right?
Sounds like the council.
Yeah, I, I believe it was, yeah.
And, and every year, the planning board usually says, okay, based on that summary, these are some of our goals, like, we want to revise the sign ordinance, um, you said, um, uh, and, and so I, so my question is, in addition to revising the sign ordinance, do you have any other kind of goals this year, like, uh, I don't know, um, updating the environmental, environmental, um, uh, part of the master plan, or is there any other goals related to?
I mean, I don't, I don't know about any, other than the sign, break down the sign orders in the bylaws or the GEE.
Uh, that's it, I'm aware of it.
And you said the bylaw, the bylaws we revised two and a half, three years ago.
We go, I said, not too long, we're not too long. They're no longer working for the, they're no longer working for.
So after two years.
Oh, and then, um, the other thing that we're looking at is to strengthen and get something, something, I don't know if it's in the bylaws or if it's a resolution or something for resolution compliance. So Kara and Beth are going to work on resolution compliance, because right now, there's no process really in place at the planning board to know who is responsible for making sure that the planning board resolution on how a project should unfold, who actually goes out and inspects it. I've had a lot of clerico tell me something is best responsibility, and when I've questioned Beth, she's like, no, it's Bob's responsibility, so we really need it clarified, because there is nothing on our books about resolution compliance.
Which is why every year, we get the, the question from Bob, hey, um, who's hiring who for the inspections? Um, so I think resolution compliance goal is actually a, a good one.
Especially before Liberty Village starts, because, I mean, we lost that with the, you know, town, right? I mean, Bob and Care, and, 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 uh.
Well, we hired Bob for that, but he is specifically, right? Um, but you, you, I think it's a good idea to put it in writing, the, the.
But I don't know what it, I don't know what it is. I don't know if it's a bylaw, I don't know if it's a resolution of planning board.
Well, that's what your committee's gonna figure out.
Kara's, yes, so they're, you know, so, I know they've already started talking about it, and each would be Kara and Beth.
Yes, I don't anticipate that being just a subcommittee, I anticipate it being driven by Kara.
That's Kara, that's Bob, but that's got.
That's up to you guys, how you decide to do it. So the, so the bylaws that were updated two years ago, you'd like to update them again, so that's in this budget. The resolution compliance and, um, taking a look at the sign, the sign ordinance, which is, I think the sign ordinance is actually a really good idea for you guys this year, um, since we've had some, some issues recently, um, from what I understand, so I think those three goals are, are good ones. Um, do you think that that, you know, it's, so basically it's a difference of twenty to, you know, twen- twenty five hundred dollars from.
That's it.
That, yeah, I, I think those are good goals. Um, I guess the only thing I'm questioning is the bylaws, because we did it so recently, and I know that, and, and I know that Karen was involved with that at the time. Um, and she was very passionate about that, so that's the only one that I'm questioning, but I don't know how much, uh, kind of, uh, I don't know how much of our, um, professionals' time that would really take.
Well, the, the reason I ask these questions is because this is what a budget process looks like. Is that you ask questions about each project and, and, and hopefully next year, we learn that when you come to the table, just like you did, you spelled it all out and say, no, we're spending this, we're spending this, and we're spending this. So the bottom line is, when we're looking at professionals and we're saying, this is how much money we're spending, are we overspending, underspending, or whatever the case may be, because it's lessons learned? That's how you do a budget, right? And so I am digging down deep, and I've asked the council to dig down deep, and you, and thank you for doing that, Adrian, because the bottom line, we need to understand what projects are gonna happen. The ones that are on the books. Now, there are always gonna be emergencies, like there's emergencies with everything else. You know, the only thing you can guarantee in life is that there's gonna be a problem at some point in time.
Okay, one of the key things was the implementing, implementation of the checklist gets us to a place of less time wasted.
Okay.
For professionals, for everyone.
Okay.
That checklist was critical.
Okay.
And then across the board, that's what it should bring. I think we've already seen that, Marsha, would you say what we get is a completer now? We just had one last week, eighteen items were missing and complete. Go back.
I have another question regarding the planning board. Um, I was, I, I'm a little confused, cause I was told that the, we've been over budget on the planning board this year, but your guys are saying that it's under budget, so I'm confused on that.
Yeah, do it, yeah, go ahead.
Who, who, like, who said that we were over budget?
No, the, uh, the only thing that I found was, uh, the environmental commission line item was charged for about four thousand dollars last year. Um, and when I, you know, asked Beth, I said, what was this invoice? It was allegedly for the Main Street zoning project. Now, i- it's entirely possible that, you know, the two were swapped or something, cause there was some work that Beth had done with the Shetree Commission and the Environmental Commission that would have reasonably been charged maybe to the Shetree or Environmental Commission, but the exact invoice that was charged to the Environmental Commission's budget was for the Main Street zoning ordinance.
That shouldn't have been.
I, I, that's what I'm saying, I, I don't know how that exactly happened, but, you know, but, but it's.
Shetree, Shetree didn't have a, have any money.
Yeah, they didn't, yeah, they weren't.
To be able to pay for the.
Yeah, for the, exactly, yeah.
require DP. So I just figured, you know, she got it scored out of environmental, cause it wasn't just the two hour meeting she did, she actually started working on.
No, she actually started writing the ordinance.
I mean, she read the whole thing that the state put in, she actually started writing it, she hasn't finished it, cause she's been too busy with COA.
But I, I would like to assume that those two, you know, line items are budget, you know, they got swapped in that manner.
I would assume that's.
Uh, cause I, I mean, three thousand, however much, I, I mean, there's a lot of references in the line item.
So, so who, who, so here's the question.
Yeah.
Bill, how do you know what line item to charge if someone's doing something environmental, or Beth's doing this, or Chris is doing? How do you know what line item to charge? Who gives you?
It typically is on the bill, um, with that, I don't know, I mean, maybe it was a typo instead of one sixty, they typed one sixty seven. Um, maybe there was someone told them to enter that, I have no idea, I don't.
But, because, do you understand where I'm coming from? The point of it is, is that because it hasn't been watched, and because we come to this, it looks like this, but the reality is just this, right? And so the bottom line is, is that it's, I'm just trying to make sure that there is a cohesive process where things are being charged correctly, and if they're not, then we are looking to say, should they be recharged or whatever the case may be, and not get to the end of the line and ask these questions.
That's why I said to all, um, department heads that unless they give us an account number, we're not processing it, so. I'm giving it to all the heads in all the, like, the historical committee, planning board, they tell us we're in charge right now, so there's no issue.
And I asked, is, you know, same thing with like twenty twenty three as well. Um, you did tell me it was various invoices for stuff, but I, I have no idea what exactly those actual items were.
And it's, it's totally possible if it, what happens with, previously, what happened is they looked at last year where things got charged, and then just charged again, so maybe it was done by mistake in twenty three, and then repeated in twenty four. But we have a new process in, in, uh, effect now that'll stop that from happening.
Thank you.
So my, my final question is, so there's no, there's, uh, so there's no intention of updating the master plan unless, uh, unless there's some sort of unusual thing that we can't predict at this point for next year? That's not on your short-term goal list for the planning board?
I think you'd have to discuss that with our chair, my chair. That's, that's where you go.
Um, is that, that's a what for you?
That's new for me.
He's saying that's.
Okay.
No. Where are we?
As well as Marsha.
Um, I, I have no idea.
Okay.
Okay, let's move on.
Wait, uh, just, uh, I, I forgot to say one thing for, uh, for the plumbing castle, I just wanted to say something, cause I did ask for them to, um, so I was just curious as to why they needed nine thousand, so I did ask them, I sent an email, I said to Marie, hey, Marie, what's up with the nine thousand, or, well, I just asked her, what is it that you guys need from us, what are you guys expecting, uh, what's your requested budget? And they did tell me just eight thousand they needed. Now, I don't know if I should have emailed that to you, Bill, if they just requested that, and that's all, or if I should have just said, here, that was my mistake. I don't know if I should have or not, but they told me, and then I asked them, uh, look, uh, can you guys, you know, do you tell me what is the, why is it they are getting nine thousand? I didn't get a response back there, so, yeah.
So what happens when they go over the eight thousand if they're requesting, because we pay for their, you know, utilities, their, their phone, their internet, all that. And then, you know, they give us, um, invoices for the cleaning of the place, you know.
And the lawn service.
The lawn service, all that kind of stuff.
All right, but I don't remember them going over us.
So what's, what's in the eight thousand?
No, yeah, cause they didn't tell me what, what it is.
What's in the eight thousand, Bill?
Well, they, I think I.
If we pay for all that stuff, what is the eight thousand cover?
They hit, they hit eight thousand dollars exactly, let's do it.
What page is that on?
It's on the first page, it says, we'll, we'll be around, we'll go.
Oh, okay, I wanna see it, okay.
That one, I, I can't tell if it's highlighted or not.
It wasn't highlighted.
It wasn't, no, it was.
No, he was just bringing it up.
Yeah, cause I think I anything back from them, basically.
So, so the question is, do they need nine thousand?
No, the question is, what's the eight thousand?
Well, that's the other part of the question, but the question is, do they need nine thousand? Well, that's the other part of the question, but the question is, do they need nine thousand? And the next question is, is what he asked, is what do you need the nine thousand for?
Yeah.
And I know they have a security system. Do we pay for that?
Security system is, uh, looks like two hundred and four dollars a quarter.
That, did they pay for that?
Yeah, internet, we internet service.
They paid for that. So that's not coming out of the eight?
No, no, that's coming out of the eight. I'm sorry.
Oh, okay. All right. All right. I'm sorry, Bill.
Um, it looks like, uh, JCP and L is about a hundred and, hundred and forty dollars a month.
Maybe internet we pick for two, don't we?
We do. Um, the cleaning is a hundred and fifty a month. Biking pest control is, uh, seventy dollars, which is monthly.
Probably, they have had problems. That's probably from last year, but that.
So all that comes out of the eight thousand?
Yep.
Even though we pay.
They also have like a sink or pair of ten hundred dollars.
So this money isn't used for their ice cream socials or anything like that?
No, it's all just their, their.
Just for the building maintenance. Okay, okay.
They got it, by the way, they got a huge fundraiser this weekend.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Sorry.
That, um, that fu- that, they're at the end, they're at the end of their, you know, like they, they basically, the last time they did a fundraiser this big was pre-COVID.
Yeah.
And essentially that's lasted them just barely about a year ago. Now they're hurting and they're gonna be building it up this weekend. So it's, you know,
So.
I, as much as I love the Fleming Castle, I don't necessarily know if the extra thousand is that money.
Bill, if these are all contracts and they're not gonna increase, do they need the extra thousand dollars?
So the reason why I did that was because the end of last year, we got them upgrade, that we had to change their internet phone system. Um, because their phone wasn't working, it was on out, um.
Okay.
And so now it's like a hundred and fifty bucks a month.
Okay, so all the other contracts are still flat out. This one's going up. So you've just got it.
So the place took like eleven hundred dollars more? Is that what you think?
It, yeah, I'd estimate about a thousand.
Do we really need a phone? I don't, again, I.
Why with the security system?
Yeah, if you have security.
Like it's, is it related to one, like you need one and then the other, basically?
Although you can have security to tap into your phone.
I have those.
I have to, I have to.
Yeah, yeah. If you have the security, it works together.
Our stuff is to our phone. Yeah, but you can tap it into your phone.
But they don't have a phone unless they have the phone.
But, but, but wait a minute. I mean, on a personal phone, I mean, you can, ours, we have on our personal phone, so something happens.
But they shouldn't be using their personal phone for this.
They should be using their personal phone for that, cause the, in theory, the board changes regularly.
So can't you just get them a cell phone with, with?
Well, it, it would end up being the same price because we need to have internet there because they have the cameras and stuff.
Price, yeah. Yeah, yeah.
Oh, that's right.
Thank you.
Yeah, no, the internet. I got you. I got you. Okay.
Yeah.
So it was, uh, cheaper to get internet slash phone.
I understand.
It makes sense. Yeah.
That is good. Okay.
But it's a good question.
Before we move off of this page, um, historic connection.
Mm-hmm.
If they say, uh, Brendan, did they get any?
Yeah, they did. I made a mistake not, I was, uh, not sending that either. So I did have a, um, they did detail here for, um, they gave me a couple of categories here. They have the CCH regulator for Clark and hints for regular professional services consulting. Uh, so sixty-five hundred they use that for, and that's CCH special. Uh, same thing, Clark and hints, additional support for CLG application in twenty twenty-five, those three thousand. Social media and website, one hundred allowance for website slash walk support. Training, three hundred allowance for Twitter attendees for, uh, HPC training, that's three hundred. Postcard slash outreach, eighteen hundred, one mailing per year reminds residents of HPC role and house tours. And then the events, which come up to three hundred walk and talk one Saturday in the fall, which comes down to twelve thousand.
They're pretty consistent, aren't they?
Yeah.
From what you guys are going, pretty consistent.
They don't think.
They got a large increase in last year specifically for the historic map update, was, was my understanding. And then they maintained that into this year despite already updating historic map.
Yeah.
Right. Right.
Right. What did they spend last year? What was their total?
Twelve thousand.
They, they, exactly.
They spent, yeah, exactly.
But they did, but they did the map update.
That was on the mapping.
Exactly.
So the question is, do they need that this year?
So, do they, why, they need that?
That's what I've been kind of wondering. Also, they, they're still paying for a website they don't have, the first thing one. I didn't, I destroyed the website, it doesn't exist. I, I mean.
So what was it prior to this twelve thousand dollar thing?
So it was seventy-five hundred and twenty-three, but it was, uh, ten thousand every year prior to that.
Twenty twenty, twenty twenty to twenty to twenty-one this time.
So, so the question is, is, is the real number ten thousand or is the real number, seven thousand is the real number twelve thousand?
The real number isn't seven thousand because, um, we took some of their money that could be environmental commission's startup money. Um, so it's not seven. It might be ten. I don't know.
Okay, we need to put a question mark on that one.
That process was a really big process and then.
So the only, the only thing I can imagine that they're still working is, uh, that they have a CLG project that they've been doing for very long time since, before I got there.
Yeah.
Yeah, but I thought that was put on hold by the state essentially. Remember Beth mentioned that, right?
So.
The center designation you're talking about.
Do you want, you know, that sequence? They have a three thousand for, uh, quiet conditional support for the CLG application.
Oh, they, so, so it's in there.
Oh, I see.
Yeah, I'm sure, so.
Okay.
My mic sounds.
Okay, so the, so the real number is, is, is probably not twelve thousand. That's, that's what I'm hearing. So that's why we put a question mark on that. Let's just keep going through everything else and let's just see where we end up. Um, so Jeremy, I think you're up next on the, um, on the fire and safety, the police and all that stuff.
Sure, I got a few, I got a few things. Um, so obviously, so council members know that my, uh, my role with these emergency services is pretty key because these, these cost a lot. You know, we're talking about equipment, we're talking about things that need to be maintained, um, cars, trucks, the whole thing. Um, so just that said, you know, one of the things that I wanted to just clarify about the fire department. Um, Bill, the repairs to the front of the building or the bay, remember?
We put money, Bill and I discussed this.
That's not even the fire department much.
No, it's in capital.
That's in cap. Okay, that's why I'm asking, so that we all know. Um, okay. And then what is, um, the increase, I'm looking at the second page, fire safety and housing enforcement. It says salaries and wages. Um, what is that increase? Sixty-nine thousand.
So Ken asked for additional money, um, to have his inspectors do more inspections or hire another inspector.
Okay, that was that. All right. And then.
Let me, let me just, uh, uh, piggyback onto that because I also, because that's kind of, that overlapped with Mike's stuff as well. One of the things that Ken made clear was, yeah, obviously, especially with the, you know, towns, there's gonna be more inspections this year than maybe in years past, which is why he wanted that. But the fee made up for those, don't they? I mean, as, we bring in.
We bring in revenue, but the problem is it's still, uh, within the cap. So it doesn't matter.
Right, right. So we have to take, we have to take an account, uh, we have to take it into account for the budget, but I, that should be noted in that there's money coming in as a result.
But.
Right? How does that work?
A million thousand dollars is, like, why are we hiring another inspector?
Salaries are outside the cap, or in, inside the cap, always, yeah.
The creation of the cap, not the landing cap.
Right. Right.
You can bring in a million dollars in revenue, but you still can't exceed the cap and spend it.
I, I get that. I just wanted to note, you know, note that, but he, but we also have to make sure that we're not holding up, you know, the, he has, if he has enough work to, to validate the number of inspectors, it's important to
So there's really only one.
make sure we're being business friendly and providing that, um, that, you know, the, the, the proper, um, uh, you know, the proper person, amount of hours from their person, for the personnel to do their job.
So there's really only one development coming online or targeted to come online in twenty twenty-five, right? That's the hotel. That's the target. It's to get it open this year.
Spice Farm.
Uh, is Spice, I don't know.
Yeah, they're ready.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't think they're ready.
Yeah.
No, sorry.
But we're just talking, which inspectors are we talking about?
This is just the, the fire marshal. So this is.
This has nothing to do with elevators or construction or plumbing.
About construction. No, so this is after the thing is ready built and the business is in there, he has to go out every year and do his inspection.
Do an inspection, make sure they're compliant.
Right.
I don't think the hotel would happen until next year. I would assume if they go into place this year, next year, they would have to make their first impact.
Yeah.
The one that would be asked before, I'm sorry, I missed that.
Thirty thousand dollars almost.
Just for an additional inspector, that's not.
It's, it's for them, not for him. It's for addition, either additional inspector or additional hours for visiting.
What I'm confused is, where does that, why does, when does it, when it does, when does it fall under the fire safety and housing? And when does it fall under the?
By the subcode.
The subcode, because if.
Fire subcodes when it's being built. After it's built, it goes to fire safety.
Right. But Ken, but.
He's bold though, so that's the problem.
I realize that. So like when I'm talking to him and he's saying, I need this, and he's talking to Jeremy and he's saying, I need this. It, does he recognize that it's two different?
Oh, he knows. He knows.
Ken knows.
He knows.
I understand that he knows. I'm saying.
When I say to him, you don't have the authority to take home one of our cars, and he says, the car's outside, but it's the black car and the red car is gone. And nowhere is there a resolution letting him take home one of our cars every single night on our dole or our cast, but he does that too. So, um, you know, I'm just saying.
You know exactly what he's doing.
You know, you can't want to think this about that.
And Ken is very, very, look, Ken is very good.
Yeah.
And it's a perk of the job right now, right? Um, but, you know, I mean, asking for a thirty thousand dollar increase when, you know, I, I.
Jeremy, what, what is your, what's your feeling on that?
I'm sorry. I didn't mean to drop. I'm just, I'm really confused.
Jeremy, what is your feeling on that?
I just, all, all I was curious about is, it, was this in fact, the fire marshal's request?
Yes.
And he sees that much of a significant amount of money?
This is the shoots he gave me, yeah.
Yeah.
Starting now or starting in September or starting in December or starting, cause that's really the question, right? I mean, there's more to it than just saying no, um, or yes. The, 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 the question really is, it is when does he see the uptick in, in having additional work? And that's a reasonable, it could be a reasonable request. It could be unreasonable in terms of the dollar amount, right? And so my question would be, is going back to what you're saying, let's just say this comes on at X, Y, and Z time. And now there's more stuff to do. At what point do you say, um, are we actually anticipating this in the fourth quarter and we just budget for that? And then we look at the next, that's what I, that's what I'm asking.
I, I've actually got a question for Jeremy. So when I look at this line item, what's the work product today versus what's the work product in December with, with development?
Yeah.
So is it, he does a hundred offices or businesses a week, uh, or a month? What is his actual work product? So we can figure out, okay, this is the work product, these are the man-hours versus future work product and man-hours.
That, that kind of goes back to what I was just saying, is that is it fourth quarter that we should really be concentrating on and saying, okay, if we're doing fourth quarter, this is how much money he may need? May. That's the question. May. Right. So that's the answer we need for that.
And this is why I'm confused, because he literally sent me the same thing with the ninety-eight thousand here. And I was under the impression it was for upcoming, you know, the way he presented it to me was more under the subcode item, but so I, like I said, I don't, I really didn't mean to take away from, from Jeremy's report here, but I, 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 and I don't think Ken is necessarily double dipping. I think that we just need to get clarification, you know?
No, he's not double dipping.
I, I, I like, like, like I said, I, I, I'm sure he's not, but I, I'm confused.
So since then, you say you have a one to your line item on buildings.
No, he's done, he's done, he's double requesting, he's not double dipping, he's double pressuring.
No.
He's selling Sue the same thing he's saying, but he's, but he's putting it in her category.
Right, he's making an argument to me.
And, and.
Cause I see the line. I see almost that. I see it on both, because each two is great.
Right.
I'm looking at the email he sent me, even this line item that says ninety-eight thousand. So it, so that's why I'm, it is why I'm confused.
And this individual, ultimately, you both have fifty percent, fifty percent over this individual that would be higher, potentially in Q four.
Exactly.
As opposed to right now.
Right. I just wanna make sure that we're lining it up under the right line item.
So, so. So, so there's two things here, right? One is, well, the line item, but the other thing is, if we pay, um, let's assume, or let's pretend, I say let's pretend, that it's coming out, that it's, it's a Q four type of thing that, that he's gonna see a bump, cause that could happen. Then what does that look like from that thirty thousand dollars? Is that more like five thousand dollars or more than ten thousand dollars? What is that? Cause it's not thirty. So that's the question. Right? Jeremy, okay.
I, I hear you. I'm just kind of, I kind of got lost in the sauce here.
Just that I pointed you out.
Jeremy, people probably are like doing all kinds of budgeting right now.
I was gonna say, Jeremy was just like, to me, it's like, like you're advocating for this one way or another, you're reporting this as a request. Yeah.
That's really what I'm, because, because it's a striking number. And when we look at these numbers, I just wanna make sure everybody's clear on what.
So is, I, I'm thinking he's asking for this individual who pays, paid approximately sixty grand a year like he is. If he's putting thirty on you and thirty into Susan's bucket, those two different buckets.
I don't think it's that much.
No, I think he's looking for probably somebody part time.
Who, 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 who covers him when he's out? Who covers, who covers him?
Um, Alan, Alan does.
It is, is there, is, is, is it Eleanor or Allen?
I think Alan, right?
Allen's hands. And do they, and do they get a bump for covering it?
Like overtime or something.
No, they just got their hours ready.
No, I'm wondering if it gets a bump for covering Carla when she's out.
No, I'm asking the question.
But, but, but hear me out, guys. Fire subcode inspector line item didn't go up this year. So even though he copied me on the same thing that he's copying Jeremy on and making that argument, I'm wondering if he actually put it in the right bucket.
Oh.
No, the fire subcode went up also.
Fire subcode inspector, but seventeen three fifty, seventeen three fifty.
Yeah. Three fifty, it's the same.
So, yeah, but, so last year we put that money in, in anticipation of, um, if you look at the year before, what it was.
It did go up the year before. So what you're saying is, he didn't use all his budget last year?
It didn't happen. Right, so.
I see.
It was in anticipation of us needing to hire someone for the, the hotel project.
I see. But we didn't actually need that yet, but now we do.
We haven't done.
So do we need to do?
I don't know. I don't know. I, I have not seen their hours increase. You know, like each one is only putting in.
It would make sense that it wouldn't yet.
Six hours a week or something, so if they.
So why give them what if it's not going up?
That's, yeah. I mean, if they start saying that, oh, I can't do it in six hours, I need to twelve, then maybe either give them more money or hire somewhere else, you know, to, to, to fill in the gap.
So it sounds like the question is the thirty grand, not the.
It is. It is.
Line item on the subcode of, uh, inspector. Okay. That answers my question. Jeremy, go for it. I'm sorry.
No, listen, that was really good.
Well, what's the decision? Is it staying or not?
Jeremy, what do you want to do?
Well, I mean, I'm gonna do my big jolly, this will be a, a good, uh, reason on here, you know, help these folks out. So, I mean, if we're sitting up here looking at numbers, cause I have other numbers I have, but I wanna talk about, but, you know, is, is this a, is this reasonable? Are you guys okay with that? I guess that's my question.
Well.
Well, not the thirty thousand.
I mean, every dollar you add in here, you better find a dollar to cut, cause we were, this is.
It's not even a choice, right?
Right, I mean, you're.
If we don't, you know, I, I'm at the point where I'm just like, you know what? We'll take the two cuts we got, put it all back. Like, this was fun, but like, we, we do not have the ability to pass a budget like this, right? Like, it's not.
Thank you, try.
It's not possible. There's a hundred and ninety-one thousand over right now.
And, and, and that's not the project and that's not the way, what, what, obviously, we're not gonna pass this budget. But the bottom line is, do we have the right things in the right places and are we giving people the right things? That's the point.
Right, Tony's point is, we're going through the process.
That's the point. That's how you do a budget.
Right.
It is not a matter of how you're gonna pass it, it's a matter of what's in the budget that you're going to pass. And I am not gonna advocate passing a budget until we're absolutely clear on every line item, what's and why is there, if we're gonna do it or if we're not gonna do it, period.
Okay, so let me just say this. Our budgets for the last several years have been extremely lean. Our departments have been working very efficiently. So in order to add any money to a budget, this budget, you have to find a way.
Then we'll have something else. That's why we're doing what we're doing. That's why we're doing this exercise. That's why we're doing this exercise, period.
Out of the.
Let's keep going, please.
Okay, uh, emergency management services.
I'm not standing that way.
Uh, other expenses. We had, I was looking back to, you know, twenty twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four.
I'm sorry.
I'm at emergency management services second.
Oh, oh, got it. I got it, I got it, I got it.
We're at twenty 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 roughly, and then up thirty-five, seven, thirty-five thousand seven hundred fifty dollars. What, um, what is accounting for that increase? For salary and wages under emergency management services?
Oh, OEM?
That's OEM.
That's OEM.
Well.
He's sitting right here.
There he is.
That's him. What is it?
So, uh, twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, um, those were my overtime numbers for COVID and Ida, which was all hundred percent repaid by FEMA.
Okay.
Um, and then annually, this is the money built in for some of my stipend and Dave Giuliani's stipend. Um, so that's what. Um, so that's what the salary and wages covers. Um, we fund that with a ten thousand dollar.
But that's not going up.
That's not going up.
That's the same.
We're talking about the other.
We're talking about.
Oh, Jeremy asked what it was, and what's the. Twenty twenty tw, so the.
Yeah.
He's answered the question that I had.
So it was, it was up in twenty twenty one and twenty twenty, uh, or twenty twenty one mostly because of Ida and COVID response. So that's why it was double.
But what about for twenty twenty, what about twenty twenty, twenty twenty four is twenty thousand, and twenty twenty five, that's gonna be thirty five thousand seven fifty.
This is your other expenses, not salary.
Okay, other expenses, so.
Yeah, is everything in the wrong or?
No.
No, no, no.
You initially asked about salaries, but.
Yeah.
Um, so the increases, we're trying to continue to fund, um, CERT and some equipment increases. So right now, the CERT team is a hundred percent volunteer. Um, we're continuing to try to grow our CERT team, so we have a, a robust group to respond to emergencies within the borough. Problem is, it costs money to outfit volunteers.
Isn't that called the police department?
What's that?
A robust group to respond to emergencies, isn't that called the police department?
Uh, well, we only have sixteen officers, and when we have a disaster, we need more than that.
But your CERT team just started a couple of years ago.
Yeah, correct.
Isn't this a perfect place to talk to Raritanship and do a shared service?
With Raritanship, well, we essentially do have a shared service, right, we, we, we support them and they support us, but.
And we also have the county, cause we're the county seat.
Well, there is no county team.
The CERT team is County CERT team?
No, this is all.
North County CERT, they dissolve?
There, there is no, each individual municipality, township has a CERT, but again, you're only getting two, three members from those teams. So like, we go down and we help Lambertville at Shad Fest. We'll, we'll go up to Holland Township and help out at the festival at River Ridge Community Center. We'll go to Raritanship and help out at the color run, Raritanship comes in and helps us. Um, generally, Raritanship is one of the only ones that comes in and helps us, the holiday parade will get Reddington, we do get a little bit of help from Lambertville. Um, but we do have other members of the Flemington community wishing to join the CERT team. But I need money to outfit them, so they can have safety gear and things to go out and respond to those incidents if they come in.
How much does it cost to train one per user than insert?
So, the, so the training is essentially free, the state subsidizes that, the initial offering.
Okay, so what's the?
Okay, then it costs me about five hundred and fifty, it's six hundred dollars to get them some pants, uh, steel toe boots, the traffic safety vests, uh, the jackets. What we're finding is, we've been using the CERT team for storm response now during our flooding emergencies to help put out barricades, monitor flooding roadways. Um, so we deploy and activate our emergency operations center during that time. And I need to get them, so this year, I'm trying to purchase rain gear for those nine volunteers, to give them fully waterproof pants, boots, and jackets. So that when they're out helping, you know, motorists and get people out of dicey situations, that they're protected.
Brian, I ask you a question.
Yeah.
So, this cost is to grow the CERT team?
Yeah, the, the, I, I requested a ten thousand dollar flat budget to grow the CERT team and outfit them, so.
What's? And what does it cost annually per member to keep them?
So, once they're outfitted, it depends on the year and how active the person is, right? So right now, I have four or five very active people, they're gonna burn out their equipment, you know, a lot quicker than. I have two that are out on medical right now, one guy's getting a knee replacement, the other gentleman has a, has a kidney issue, um, so he's, he, he's not as available. Um, so, you know, I could be seeing that five hundred dollar cost annually, right? Or, or, or every other year, depending on how active they are.
So, this ten thousand dollars is, is gonna cover growing it by how many people?
Well, this year, if, with ten thousand dollars this year, I can buy everybody their, um, their equipment. Here, I have a breakdown of what I did, so uniforms for this year would be two thousand dollars, the storm gear would be fifteen hundred. Um, the vehicle maintenance, cause we absorbed that, uh, the old crown deck from the police department, so it needed some minor repairs. We wanted to letter it, um, and get some equipment for it, that was two thousand dollars. Uh, traffic control equipment, we need to purchase additional stop signs, traffic ones, and some barricades, fifteen hundred. Uh, emergency safety equipment to include new first aid kit, flashlights, um, and some radios, uh.
Let me ask you two questions.
Yep.
Number one, where do, where do you store all this stuff?
In the basement.
Here, it's all in the basement here?
Yep, I'm quickly running out of time, but.
Okay, and, um.
So, um, and then we, so, and then, that, so then the training and certifications, I need to maintain their CPR, there's additional FEMA training courses that they take for storm response. Um, and, and training materials, so fifteen hundred, so that comes out to the ten thousand for this year. Now, once that's stored.
That's just for the nine people you have right now.
Yeah, well, that would give me the ability to bring on hopefully four more, that's what, what my uniform cost would be.
And they're.
So the ten thousand, you just came round off.
Yes.
That's for, you have nine and four, so that's for thirteen people.
Correct.
Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, that's what I guess.
So, so that's ten thousand, so where does the other five thousand seven hundred and fifty come in?
So, the rest of that would be for emergency management expenses, so I'm still trying to, um. We have, uh, additional vehicle repairs that we need to do to the one OEM code enforcement vehicle. Um, so I need to do some stuff to that, and then we're still absorbing this room as our emergency operations center, since we used to have an EOC at the old police department. The current police department doesn't have a space for us.
This is.
So, yeah, so I'm still trying to do some radio upgrades and needed stuff that when we need to activate in this room.
I'm sorry, the code enforcement OEM vehicle, that shares with Dave Giuliani?
Correct.
So why, he put five thousand in his budget for that too, right, Bill? Five thousand of his seventy five hundred dollar increases.
Okay, that I didn't know.
To do the same vehicle.
That I didn't know.
I believe he did.
Yes.
Okay, Dave didn't.
Same vehicle, so it's.
Dave didn't start out with me, so then that's, yeah, so it's about, we could probably shave out another.
It's only five thousand.
So, so, so the, so is the number really more like thirty thousand that you need in order to get up and running and, and make sure that we're covered? Cause, you know, I'm always very, very, very sensitive to storms.
Mm-hmm.
Because if, I mean, you see the news, I see the news, you know, so the point of it is, I'm never gonna be so arrogant as to think that it's not gonna happen here.
Yep.
Um, and so, and if we're not equipped to do it, then what?
Right.
So, okay.
Yeah, so, yeah.
So just some extra room for growth, and this, my question, Bill, is, um, this was, I believe, was in the original budget, we saw, correct, the thirty five seven fifty? No, it wasn't, okay, no, okay.
No, no, no.
No.
Yeah, Steve, there's, cause it's high, well, you don't have the highlights.
I mean, my, my problem, my, like, my problem with CERT volunteers, unlike police, is that they're volunteers. So if the volunteer's home is being flooded and the police officer's home is being flooded, the police officer is showing up, cause that's his job. I'm just, stay off, right? The volunteer may not, we're gonna outfit these people and hope they're gonna come, as you just said, we've already got a couple of guys that aren't necessarily showing up.
Sure.
So we're gonna spend a lot of money on equipment for people who possibly get cool equipment, I mean, I know.
You know, but they also offset all of our police services, um, for every event we run in this town. I mean, we could not run the holiday parade or the turkey truck without the CERT teams from both Flemington and.
I'm not saying they're not valuable. I'm not saying they're not valuable, don't misunderstand me, I mean, Steve was a member of the North County CERT, tell him that.
So, I mean, our standard SOP for our members, when they join, I have an onboarding meeting with them, and I explain to them.
Tell him that. So.
We, part of our standard operating procedure for when a storm is coming is home preparedness first. We have them prepare their homes, their basements, their some pumps, to understand that they're going to possibly be here for deployment, and that they're not gonna be able to do what you're saying, and have to run home. Um, and deal with their own home, so we, we preach to them and encourage them for home hardening, right? To make their own arrangements, so that they can be here, so first they focus on that. Then second off, we come here and we clean out the basement each time, they get all of our furniture up. And, uh, put everything up on blocks and carry everything up in this room and set everything up, because we know the basement's gonna probably take on water at some point. Um, so that is what we do, yes, I might, you, are you gonna stop a volunteer from saying, I'm going home? No, but we do, our volunteers that we currently have, minus the two gentlemen that are out on medical, um, you know, they, they are here, they stay for the duration of the storms. They're some of the first ones in and last to go home.
What is their tenure? Is the tenure of, of current volunteer?
Well, we've all, they've all been operational since twenty twenty one.
Okay, so, so they've been with you for, since twenty twenty one?
Uh, most of them, yes, I, I onboarded two in twenty, Mark Kane and, um, and Walter came in in twenty twenty three, so.
So during, during, during Ida, and, and, and. So during Ida, this is, we didn't have our CERT, our CERT team until after Ida. Oh, to after.
Correct, I just showed us that we needed it.
Gotcha.
Can I just answer that real quick?
Yes.
I just feel I'm missing something huge here. So you said ten thousand for, was it ten thousand or something like that?
Yeah, I asked for a flat ten thousand.
It was ten thousand, and then there was five thousand seven hundred and fifty or something, what, what's the other twenty thousand?
Well, that's just our regular operational costs, our, our subscriptions, um, our, our generator repairs, um. So, yeah, we, we maintain all the, the standby generators for, for the borough, um.
That was my other question, I just remembered it, there, isn't there any grant money out there?
So, there is, so we're in, the problem is, our hazard mitigation plan, because we moved all of our buildings, we have, I had to change everything. So, I'm in, I'm in the process of doing that, the county has to re-adopt the hazard mitigation plan at their level, and then I can bring it back here for you folks to re-adopt. Then we can start applying for FEMA money. The problem is, all the FEMA money is currently frozen.
Frozen, yeah.
That's what I, I had a question.
So, the only thing that's still approved right now is my EMAA grant, which, now, my operational funds bill are twenty something thousand. But I fund ten thousand of that every year, I bring that back through a grant, I do myself. So, ten thousand of that immediately comes back every fiscal year.
Is there anything at the state level?
That is, that, so that is a state, that's federal, yeah, it's through NJOEM, but funded by FEMA, that, that's the only reason it's still active.
There's no state. Yeah, and they, EOM, okay, I got you, mm.
Okay, yeah.
So Brian, I, I guess one of the questions I had was, we, yeah, nothing's changed in the last several hours as far as federal freezing of FEMA funding. So are you, is that part of this?
Well, no, my EMAA grant will still come this year, we got, the state police already, Bill and I got that from them, that said, that's, that's open still. Whether or not we'll be eligible for hazard mitigation funds, like, cause right now, I, I have a grant that we're working on to try to get storm windows put in here, because this is our EOC.
Right.
So Carla, I told Carla, like, if, once that opens up, we can try to do the front windows here, put storm windows in, some pumps for the basement, the generator for the police department. Um, cause that's how we got the generator for the police department last time, that's how we got this building wired for generator power after Sandy was through hazard mitigation. So, once those funds become available again, we can, I, I'll, as soon as they tell me that those funds are open among those projects.
In this environment now, we are truly maybe looking in a world where we are completely on our own and must be self-sufficient in these roles.
Correct, yes. Correct, and then.
So that's something we have to, I think.
The other, the other increase.
I feel not think, I feel like I was.
And the other increase I put in here is for emergency housing, because we don't know what is gonna happen with Code Blue and the warming center.
Okay.
Later in the year, so we build in a thousand dollars emergency shelter every year, which I don't generally ever spend, but I requested an increase to three thousand this year. Because the East Main Street fire again showed us that we could have had to house someone, luckily, both of those individuals had insurance. But a hotel room is still, even with my negotiated rate over at the Hampton Inn, is still like a hundred and fifty dollars a night. Um, so I need, if, if Hunter Hill burns down again tomorrow, I can open a shelter, but at some point, we're gonna have to pick up the bill of emergency shelter for some people with special needs. Or, you know, there's other reasons you can't put, uh, people in congregate shelters also, so then we have to put them somewhere. Um, so I put that in there, and then same thing, if Code Blue, you know, if, uh, warming center comes September, and depending on what the county ends up doing. We could have to shelter our own folks in need, so I put, I did build that extra money in there in case we needed it, so.
This is why budgeting is important, do we, did you guys find out how much information that we didn't know and that he's, that he's struggling with? This is why it's important to do this, first of all, but second of all, let me go back to this one thing, did you say that the storm, we don't, the storm windows are? Not right for this building, and this is your, and this is your headquarters?
Well, this one.
There's something, well, so we know that.
Okay, I don't care if we knew it, then we should have done something about it a long time ago, if this is his headquarters, and we, and heaven forbid a storm comes in, and those windows go out. And all your servers are right there, what the hell are we gonna do? This is, doesn't make sense, I'm sorry, this doesn't make sense, this is irresponsible, this is irresponsible. So the bottom line, is that money in this, or is there, but you put, but you've put money in the budget for storm windows, correct?
No, that's.
But you've put money in the budget for storm windows, correct? Didn't we talk about this?
There's the capital, um, I have money in capital for building repairs along with the, uh.
Okay, 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 I, I, I get it.
We got some capital budget for building.
Okay, okay, I just wanna make sure I've heard all of this correctly, but the bottom line is, is that. What I hear, and I, and again, what I thought I heard, is that the real number is not thirty five thousand seven fifty, the real number is probably more like ten thousand. My question to you is, out of that ten thousand, is it, if, where is the line that you can settle with? Is it line that you can settle with an additional five thousand, is it additional two thousand, is it, what, where is the line that you can?
Well, know, knowing that Dave budget, is budgeting for some of those vehicle expenses, then, yeah, sure, I, I could definitely come down to the, the thirty. And, uh, I'll make cuts with the CERT, and we don't necessarily have to expand the CERT team this year, I just, I, when people reach out, they wanna volunteer, and, and just, you know, you feel bad turning volunteers away, right?
But we, you tried them out, and you don't outfit them right away, and make sure they're gonna stick with it.
Well, I know, but I can't, I can't put them out without, without.
Without any, without any protection here.
Start with the training.
Oh, sure, absolutely, yeah, the training's free, okay, you know.
So, so, so the real number is like thirty K, that's what we're saying, basically.
And, and they definitely, like, margin, I'm gonna say this to its own boots, that's one of the things that, that to me is critical in the emergency, like.
And they're about, they're about a hundred and, a hundred dollars.
So, so if you don't grow by the four, then how much, and you, and the car's already in Dave's budget, then what's your real number?
Um, only look back at this, so.
I'd, I'd actually rather keep the money in his budget than put it in proper maintenance, I mean.
Well, okay, okay, that's, no, I get that, and it belongs in his budget, I'm just saying. So we now, we have some place for us to, 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 five K, so we have a place somewhere else.
Yeah.
We could be past, we skipped right over Dave's budget, so.
Because.
But I think we just have not.
Pick those up.
Yeah, exactly.
It's a double shift.
So if we keep it here, which Bill would prefer.
And listen, I can go back, I already went back once and trimmed down what the equipment list is, like, there may be some things I can do to get some cheaper equipment and stuff donated, but. I'm just, I can match you with my wish list, you know.
But then if. So you went from twenty to thirty five seven fifty, right? So if the five stays with you. Out of that ten thousand seven hundred and fifty dollar increase, if you don't grow by the four, and you just do training for them and see if they wanna stick with it.
I can save two thousand dollars.
Will be two thousand less.
Yes.
So, so, so we're basically at twenty eight thousand.
Thirty three thousand seven hundred and fifty.
Well, no, he's, because the thirty five doesn't, the.
The thirty five's gonna stay there, and they get cut out of Dave's budget.
The.
Yeah.
It's only gonna be thirty, he's gonna keep, so it'd be down to twenty eight, right? Because it's, the five thousand seven hundred and fifty is, is Dave's.
No, we're not, we're cutting that off.
Oh, you're gonna keep it with him, okay, okay, got it, got it, okay.
Then I'll manage, I'll manage Dave's repairs for him.
I'm better budgeting.
I, I know we're gonna lose that.
So, so I, I, I think on this line item, guys, I'm very, I'm pro, I'm pro safety, I'm pro community, but I'm also pro people being safe that are doing this.
Agreed. Agreed.
We would do it for fire, like, correct, you're all volunteers, so.
Exactly, agreed.
I have a que, can I, can I ask a question about the, the, the standard twenty thousand dollar budget, that's your kind of dates?
Mm-hmm.
The, not, the, the supplies for the, 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 um, the volunteers' equipment, isn't normally part of that twenty thousand dollars?
Some of it is, but then I also have the OEM staff too.
Okay, so, so.
So, yeah, so CERT, I have CERT, and then I have the OEM deputies.
And that's a definitely.
Also, right, and they.
But none of the CERT volunteers', um, equipment is in that standard twenty thousand every year?
I've, well, I, I've been purchasing it and trimming the fat to make, and to meet, right?
I appreciate that.
So, that's, so I, you know, this year, it would give me the ability to get everybody on the same page, get them everything they need, and then next year. And then, and a lot of this equipment's reusable, right? I'm not getting it, their names put on everything, I can pull it back if they quit. And then reuse it, you know, provided it's the right size.
Yeah, but, but I, and I'm not an advocate of buying cheap stuff, because I end up replacing it, that, that just never makes sense, it never makes sense. It's, you know, penny wise and powerful.
So, so Bill, if we get, if we do end up getting FEMA money to replenish some of this stuff and do a chapter one thirty nine, is that gonna be the operating budget, or is that gonna be surplus if we can't spend it?
If you chapter, then it's a grant.
Right.
So, I mean, when, what you could do is, if you wanted, is just appropriate it in the grant fund, you know, the grant side, so you have the offsetting revenue, so it's.
As if we were gonna get it.
Correct.
That was actually my next question, it was related to the windows and doors, because, you know, we did the energy plan last year, and as a result, we're supposed to be allocable for other things. And in, literally, last week, there was the email that came out about the, um, the energy efficient tax break. That the, the, it's called Resource One Seventy Nine D. So, I know that's kind of above and beyond this budget discussion, but I think we might be able to at least have some sort of. So, I know that's kind of above and beyond this budget discussion, but I think we might be able to at least have some sort of, um.
Sorry. Doors.
Uh, tax break on the, uh, the windows and doors replacement, but I can forward this, I think.
Well, probably, we don't.
No.
Well, I don't understand that, because it says for municipalities and school districts and those are, so there must be something, one, one seventy nine D.
Can I, can I, can I stick to the chapter one fifty nine in the grant on, on, on OEM, um, so, so if you.
Yes. Authority.
Put an offsetting grant in in anticipation of.
If I put ten thousand in the grant, on the grant appropriation, with the offsetting revenue, it won't affect the taxes, it'll get it out of cap, we reduce this, his budget by ten grand.
But is the car?
But I think that's just for sour though, isn't it?
My EMAA, well, you can do whatever you want with EMAA.
Oh, okay.
You can do whatever you want, so it it can be used, as long as it is used, it's being used to further the emergency management program with.
But what about the one that is pending with FEMA to the county, is that restricted?
Or it's, well. It's not restricted, it's an eighty twenty split.
Okay.
Okay, so we have to fund, well, we have to fund it all, and then they give us eighty percent back.
So can you use it for funding cert's equipment?
No.
We, no, it's ha, it's a, it's hazard mitigation, so it has to be.
So, but you could use the E. You can use the EAAM money to fund cert.
Yeah, as long as it furthers our program.
We should not depend on FEMA.
And you can use it for the car.
Yes, we should not depend on FEMA, we should not depend on FEMA, we should not depend on FEMA, are you guys not listening? You should not depend on FEMA, that should not even be a discussion, it it's not gonna happen, it's.
No, it's even at the GSA right now, they're.
And FEMA is not even functioning right now, why would you even go down this road? I'm in contact with DC every single day, I know what's happening. We are not gonna depend on FEMA, we are not gonna do this.
Okay, well, that's eight thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars you have to find somewhere else in the budget to cut. That's all, if you don't wanna find an offsetting balance revenue.
Well, I mean, the the bottom line is, is that we'll, we'll look at several different things, because.
Then, then. Well, if we're here, look at it now, that's why.
Marsha, do not yell at me again, do not do it, do it constantly, you do it constantly, because, and because you deserve it.
Don't. You can luxury me all night, come on, all night.
So here's the point, you do, you do, well, you do, and I am arrogant, so you do it, deserve it.
No, oh my god, it's arrogant, that is arrogant.
You do. Yeah.
But you know what you are, that's a cold car, it's rude, and it's arrogant, how dare you?
No, because. Okay, well, that is, that is what it is.
How dare you?
So now you know how it feels when you lecture me.
I never lecture my dad.
You did it last year, guys, come on. So we're not going this way, we're not going this way again, why?
Stop, stop, stop.
Let's move forward.
Anybody?
Such that it's not justified, how are you going to spend money, it's where you're going to cut it if you want to.
But Marsha, it is also, do we actually have to look at just doing this, or do we say, instead of paying down this much debt, because we know it's coming next year, do we reconfigure that? That's what it really means.
Ah, so you're gonna do capital, go back to, go back to, no, but we can't be desperate.
Well, it just, that's what it means, no, but, but, but my point of it is, you don't like me much, but the point of it is, is that we don't look at just one thing, we look at everything. That's the point, that's the point of a budget, whether we agree on it or not, that's okay, the point of it is, is that you open it up so that you can do it, that's the point. All right, let's move on. And I apologize, but let's move on.
Can we go back to Dave Giuliani's line, this, that he went from seven fifty to seventy five hundred, I called you and said, was this a typo?
Where's Dave Giuliani's line?
One nine seven.
We're right above the thirty five thousand.
Okay, so five thousand, yeah, this is a car repair, we're keeping in Brian's budget, no.
This is the same.
But. They don't, they don't need five thousand though, for that car.
Yeah. He has seven thousand dollars for the shared vehicle mix.
The car's in good shape, minor.
Yeah, it was seven fifty, then it's seven thousand.
So how much did the, so what's the real, because Dave told, Dave put in five.
Yeah.
We gotta, we gotta put tires on it this year, which will probably be like a thousand bucks, and it's gonna need brakes, so.
So that's like fifteen hundred.
Fifteen hundred.
Yeah, like fifteen to eighteen hundred dollars, so.
So wait, so you're, so then going back to you, then, your eighty seven hundred and fifty dollar increase, which includes five thousand for a car.
Yeah. But I also have the cert car.
Oh, okay, okay.
So how many cars are there?
We have the, we have three emergency management vehicles.
Okay.
Okay, we have the, the Tahoe, we have the Explorer, and then we have the Crown Vic.
And the Crown Vic is the one you would share, that's what Dave Giuliani.
No, the Dave, Dave, yeah, the code enforcement OEM is the Explorer.
Okay.
Okay, so, and then, we absorb, the police department was decommissioning the Crown Victoria. We need another vehicle, we we run out of vehicles for these events.
So what's wrong with each vehicle?
Nothing, the, the.
They should need regular maintenance.
Oh, yeah, they should need regular maintenance.
Okay, so that's five thousand.
Yeah, I mean, we did the big repair, and I don't, did you roll that month, the big repair that we did on the Crown Vic over into this year, so that was last year. So it's getting lighter, it's getting stickers put on the guides of it, which that, we paid that already, um, and uh, and need to get the radio in it, and uh.
But it's normal, it's just, it's on three cars, it's vibrant, okay, so getting back up to Dave's then, right, so it's.
Yeah, maybe. Yeah.
He put in, he put in a thousand dollars for office supplies, five thousand for vehicle repairs, and fifteen hundred for uniform clothing allowance.
What the heck, that's not, I, I, that's, that's not where he sent me here, what did he send you this?
What is he looking back for in allowance?
That's, that's what he sent me.
Okay. But he has here, training one thousand, office supplies fifteen hundred, uniforms five hundred, shared vehicle expense seven thousand, and salary TBD.
Are we paying it gold? I mean, I'm okay if he wants to pay it.
So how much did he, how much did he give you, how much did he give you, Susan?
That's what I, I just remembered.
No, 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 where was the dollar bond, the, the, five hundred dollar line?
Okay, it's uh, eight, nine, fifty, uh, ten thousand, plus the, that was for the other expenses line, under property maintenance.
So he went from seven hundred and fifty dollars to eighty thousand?
Yeah, but he, you know, if your number here says seven, seventy five.
You don't ask for that yet.
I'm not, but I think that seven thousand is like, clearly, there's, clearly, that's also in, in, in Brian's, so it really is in ten thousand.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, so the seven, the seven's gone, but wait, so he asked for seventy five hundred, which one, which one are we gonna stick with, would it be Susan, or?
No, no, he asked for.
Well, when did he send you this, because he sent me this back in uh, last, you know, the beginning of the year last year.
He sent me this last week.
Okay, so he probably didn't remember what he sent me.
Yeah. Well, he's very good.
So he sent it to the California. Can you just go through these one at a time, one, so let's discuss each one.
Sure, I'll do that again. Okay, so I'll start with shared vehicle expense, seven thousand.
So we're not doing that, because it's in Brian's budget, that's not, that's gone.
Look, it's probably.
Yes, and obviously, obviously, the two of them didn't know each what each one of them put it in, right?
Okay, next.
Training one thousand.
Does he normally do training, what kind of training does he need to do, I mean, it's not a certified physician. I mean, it's not a certified physician, it's a mayoral appointment actually, so what does he, did he tell you anything about what he needs for training?
I'm sure he did, but I do not recall at this moment, I will get back to everybody on that.
I mean, he can be, like, it's an annual appointment, an annual appointment.
I don't even know where you would get the training.
So Susan, here's the question, will there be a certification that needs to happen?
There is not, I can tell you there's no certification.
Okay, so if there's no certification that needs to happen, then we just scratch that.
Yeah, scratch it.
Next, what's next, Susan, what's next on your list?
Then just scratch that.
Office supplies fifteen hundreds.
Which I don't understand, because that's yours.
He was gonna get it through Laureen, what, we all share more or less, yeah.
Yeah, he gets all the supplies, construction.
Okay, so then we take that off, what else?
What's next?
Uniforms five hundred.
Okay, what's the uniform for?
Well, he does wear, he does wear.
He has.
He has tactical pants, and he uh, he has a couple jackets and stuff.
He does, yeah. Because he's also his deputy, so.
For cert, so.
So, so does that, does that mean an annual expense that you guys replace your uniforms, or just?
Right.
Yeah, some.
Or get everyone, yes.
But let me ask you, does he, does he get outfitted by cert separately, or does he wear that?
Don't you go.
No, he has a, the OEM stuff's different than what he wears.
Yeah, but he doesn't need, I mean, are, the last, the last property maintenance manager was, is.
Well, I mean, Dave, that certainly looks professional, you know, he has his nice Carhartt jackets on, and, you know, he looks like a photo.
He does.
The bottom line, five, five hundred dollars reasonable, that's the question, also, how they can establish five hundred dollars?
Five hundred. Yeah, what do we, what do we, what do we TPW you have in your, your guide? When you, like, estimate, I think it was like a thousand, like a thousand, TPW.
Thousand. Yeah. Mm-hmm.
These line items aren't a huge amount of money, but I think we'll get, let me get some more details on what all these line items are.
Where is, where, where's the next one?
Yeah, what's, what's.
That's all them, I just read them all, I mean, that's why.
Okay.
That sounds like.
Okay, so it sounds like it comes down to like, it sounds like it comes down to like five hundred dollars.
Yeah, I know, but the, with the exception of the vehicle, which we know is not, is not applicable, he's got, he's got two thousand dollars here, so.
So wait, that he needs?
That's what, that's the, that's the total of the other expenses, but.
Where the other?
He spent a hundred and twelve last year.
That's what I was looking for.
So clearly, clearly, there's some, some things that can cut from here.
The year before that, he spent six sixty eight.
So, okay, so here's the question, here, okay, so here's the question, because that I, I'm not just gonna say, so the question is.
Do you know what that was on?
So maybe we, we.
Before.
Because.
Yeah.
Does he need five hundred dollars, or does he need seven hundred dollars? Because that's kind of what the question is, because it was seven fifty last year, correct?
Right.
So, is it, is the real number five hundred, or is the real number seven fifty?
One of the things he did say was part of this budget was, um, uh, was putting. Uh, was, uh, I don't remember, I apologize, let me, let me get some clarification on it.
So, does, does, he. Does he get his uniform now out of that seven fifty, his clothes, his Carhartt jackets and stuff?
Well, yeah, I mean, spent, um, like, six hundred bucks, uh, last year, and then, year, two years before that, it was like five hundred.
So. So, so basically, that seven hundred and fifty dollar line item, he's been using for clothing.
Correct.
Because the office supplies are coming out of the office, the car is coming out of his budget.
Correct.
He doesn't have any required CEUs or training, so the seven fifty sounds like it's more than enough for the five hundred dollars he's actually requesting for the budget.
I don't think so.
Okay, so then we're gonna keep it at seven fifty, right?
I'm a little confused that, what, what is not here on this list that I know he discussed with me, was that he put a, um, a company on. Contract to do, you know, to do services, when, when things came up against, you know, properties that maybe had a lien on them.
Oh, the RNO or whatever, RNS.
What kind of services?
You know, like the wall where they cleaned it up, RNS.
Right.
They have to lean authorized by the council.
Right, exactly, so that doesn't come out of his budget, it come out of the council's budget.
Right, yeah, I don't know how to.
It's what, it come out of the council's budget. He, but he wanted to put to my.
A building. Actually, no, it came out of, right, it came out of somebody's budget, with a lien against the property to get reimbursed.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. I think there are.
Not out of his budget.
Susan, what were you trying?
Right, but he wanted, thank you, he wanted, uh, to bring to my attention that he did increase that, that request in the overall budget. So that he could ma, we could make sure we plan for items like that, because they seem to be coming up more, and he needs calling them more.
Right. But that comes out of DPW's budget, so.
Correct. That's fine, but me as the liaison, he wanted me to be aware of it, so, that's why I'm bringing it up.
Okay.
I think seven fifty is fine.
So, so we're gonna keep it at seven fifty, are you okay with that, Susan?
I'd like to get, so, I, I, I think that's fine, I, I would like to get a little bit more information from him, um, some of these items, and and report back to you in case, in case there's some.
Okay, so.
I'm sure we have done a work session.
So hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on.
Is there some argument that I knocked to you about?
Hold on, Susan, Susan, here's the question, the question is, can we use seven fifty for right now?
Yeah. Yeah. Yes.
You can send an email to everybody and whatever, um, okay, so once you're at seven fifty, Jeremy, we need to go back to you on.
Absolutely. Yes.
Yeah, I know, this is.
On, please.
Um, can I just want to ask one question about the property maintenance, so. He's putting in a lot more hours than in previous years, I mean, as long as the council's aware of that, I, I.
Right.
I know, I know that.
Yeah, because we were getting a lot of complaints that, you know, we aren't being, you know, keeping up on people with property maintenance, so, you know, Dave's done a, a really. Good job this year picking up with that stuff, so, um, it's, you know, we should recognize that.
It's like twenty five to twenty hours.
So what is, what are you saying?
But it's not.
The salary line is going up, huh?
I'm just, I'm just saying, that's why, if we look in historically, the salary line, that's why it's, you put in more hours, so.
That's true.
So it's.
So it's validated?
Yes, it's.
I mean, as long as it, other than, okay, Jeremy, um, can you just go through, please? Yeah, hold on a second.
So please, OE budget.
Are you done with fire?
Fire, I, uh, I believe so, let's double check, because.
Can I say something about Ken McCormick?
Sure.
Because I did ask him why, like, the rev is working Tuesdays and Thursdays, like, he usually knows, and he said that he's waiting for the budget to get more hours, to pay them.
Okay.
So, they, he has something going in.
Who isn't working Tuesdays and Thursdays?
Why would he wait for the budget? He should just work his regular hours, just like.
Oh, yeah, he has to work every weekend, every week, like Tuesdays and Thursdays, or he'll, he'll work one day now, or work the other day.
So what did that mean?
I guess they're waiting for the budget to save the much money, to see if it covers the hours.
But we have a temporary budget in there.
Weren't, weren't they just working standard hours every two weeks?
Yeah, they usually were, yeah.
They usually were working Tuesdays, well, the rev was Tuesday and Thursday, and I said, oh, I see, coming in.
Okay.
I don't know about ringing, if we're not getting in.
I think he is, he's doing them, okay.
He being who?
Ken.
Okay, so, so can, can we just go to, please, Jeremy, you're first of all, you're, where are we with fire, where do we land?
I think I had all the questions for that when I needed.
All right.
Fire or fire prevention, which one are you talking about?
I'm looking at fire and.
Fires, good, fires request is thirty five hundred dollars higher. What's the difference there?
But that's because that, the, hold on, so I'm looking at the salary and wages, that, where did we land on that, because it went from sixty nine to ninety eight. And so, because he wanted.
Jeremy said it's gonna affect to us.
No, no, I don't remember this at all, what is, where?
Jeremy, right, you, oh wait, that was the one where I said, you're just reporting, you're not advocating, that was fire.
Yeah, yes, that's all, yeah, yeah, mhm.
So do we wanna stick with the sixty nine, three?
Until, I think until it's justified, did he really need, until that hotel's open, and we see what's going on, I don't know, I don't.
Well, I thought we were doing a flat increase across the board, so I don't necessarily know if it should be sixty nine.
But this is for another person. This is for another person.
Yeah, it's not, it's not for sixty percent.
How, how, guys, I really cannot see hiring somebody or having this number at full time for a year.
Yeah, but it's not gonna be a year, it's only gonna be a quarter of a year, really, you're, you're.
Oh, I agree with you on that. Well, no, but that was the question to Jeremy, because we only had it from, from, like, October, November, December, what does that look like, and does he really need that? Or do we just stick with sixty nine three? That's the question.
Well, he, he asked for ninety eight thousand for a reason, um, but.
I think I would rather stick sixty nine three, because I'm looking at the next line, and that's a hundred and ninety seven K, John, please.
Well, I, if I remember right, didn't Ken say, isn't some of that thirty going to Dave Giuliani, because he needed his backup?
Both this and the police.
Right?
No.
No.
That's it, no.
He doesn't respond to fire calls, he's just doing like.
Okay.
Chucking, yeah.
Okay, so.
Why did Ken ask for Dave to be as, to be a backup then? Oh, no, we're talking about John now, sorry.
Talking about John, yeah.
I'm sorry, I think it's in the mouth.
Okay, okay, so, so Jeremy, just, just for budget purposes, trying to get through this. Are you comfortable with just keeping it at sixty nine three, or do you wanna do a quarterly, at, 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 like a three month thing, or what do you wanna do?
Well, we. So my budget that I had prepared originally, um, included a little bit extra for them, six thousand dollars more. For them to do additional inspections and the increase, the regular.
Oh, so you built a cent?
I built a little bit of it, but not a full ninety eight.
Well, no, 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 I'm just saying, but you built something there.
I, I had about seventy eight.
Okay.
In my original, uh, you know, proposal.
So, and then you took it down to, I'm sorry.
No, in my original proposal, it's seventy.
I, I see, I see, I'm looking at that.
You've built in, you've built in the work, you put, okay, and you built in like one third of a year.
You built it.
Correct.
So the, so the number was seventy and not sixty nine.
Yeah, you built in one third of a year, quarter of a year, that's good, instead of the thirty.
Yeah.
So, so should we keep it at six, so, so the question is, and it goes back to Jeremy, should we keep it at seven, seven eight, or should we? Because Bill said that he's already put some money in and covered.
Jeremy's not advocating, he's just.
Well, yeah, and, and look, I mean, at the end of the day, you know.
Well, that's why I want Jeremy to say, what does he want, like, what do you wanna do?
The department.
Well, I mean, I'm, I'm always leaning on the CFO, because he's, he's the numbers guy, you know, I'm not gonna sit here and say, I don't know anything about fire inspection, I have no, no knowledge whatsoever of the.
Okay. Okay, but I think the question really is, is do you wanna stick with the seventy eight, do you wanna stick with the sixty nine? Because Marsha's saying, and she's right, you're not advocating, so which one do you want?
It sounds to me, I've heard a couple of voices up here, um, I, we can back it up a little bit more into Bill's territory. Whatever you were comfortable with the first time around.
So Bill, do you wanna stick with seventy eight, or do you wanna stick with seventy six?
I guess we have to see how the rest of the budget goes, but yeah, I would, I would stick with the seventy eight.
So we're gonna lower to seventy eight for now, okay, and we're gonna make up whatever else, like the eighty seven fifty, it might go lower. So what was that number, seventy eight, what, seventy eight?
Eighty eight either.
Yeah.
Yeah.
At quarter thirty is seventy five hundred, if this is about right.
Okay, so now, Jeremy, now we got, I, I just had a couple of things, but one quick question, um, I'm on page four.
It's four.
It's under statutory expenditures, uh, under where it's, underneath where it says, um. What, where it says DCRP.
Mm-hmm.
What is that, Bill?
Applying Contribution Retirement Program, it's, um. Last year, we started, the auditors told us we had to start, um.
It's an alternative to the pension system.
Correct, certain, certain employees had to start, and going into that, such as Dave Giuliani now is in the DCRP. Um, the library staff is in DCRP, um, crossing, certain crossing limits.
Because they have to qualify for their pensions, so.
Part-time employees?
Part-time employees, yes, if they earn over five thousand dollars and would have been eligible for, uh. Hers, if not for being part-time, they're eligible for DCRP. PERS if not for being part-time, they're eligible for D C R P. There's certain crossing guards that are in there as well, but or a few of our crossing guards, I guess, are retired from uh PERS already, so they're not eligible.
So it's alternate to the state pension for part-time employees, correct?
So we.
So.
Correct.
Okay, got it.
Then that was a suggestion from the auditor.
It was, it's not a suggestion, it's quite.
It's very awesome, mom, cool.
Yeah, got it, okay. Okay, so so that's that, alright, um. So my last thing is, um, I have been in contact with Chief Police and I know we heard from the mayor and we heard from the council president's last meeting about it, the topic came up, um, I am gonna ask Bill to kinda look at this. I have my reasons, my conversations with the chief of police, uh, he has his. I wanted to see, uh, obviously, you know, the council, you know, you you guys will vote with with this or not with this on this particular item, but if Bill, if we were to build in, uh, one more promotion in that police department for a corporal, what would that look like for the budget? Cause it's not in there right now, correct?
Well, this budget as presented has one additional um officer and two promotions to sergeant. That's why it went up.
Where did the two come from?
That's where, what he gave me.
Where additional officer come from?
That's what the chief had originally asked for.
Originally?
So, 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 right, so.
What's originally?
When he gave me his budget proposal, that's what was in the budget.
This is last year in twenty twenty four, new year.
So per the original, I think I know why the the additional was there, because I think, if I'm not mistaken, is that based upon this um Cintac um thing that was done way back when, it said that it was going, that it was suggested that they would have a bring on a new police officer or new position every year for five years. It says that, but I think that's, he's trying to follow the vote, follow that, I think that's where that's coming from. I'm assuming.
But ultimately, he didn't have, cause when he, I talked to him, he told me that was out. So not, no, no, you know, he wanted the full-time, he wanted the full-time secretary more than he wanted any hire.
So that we gotta talk about this offsetting of things, because if, let us say that we do not hire an additional officer this coming year.
Yes.
Uh, we have a, we'll be having a full-time receptionist, uh, two, they're asking for originally two sergeants. Now, the cost of that, we we know what that is, we're looking at, right? So is it, and I'm asking the council, you know, I firmly believe there should be promotions, that we can have at least one promotion this this time around.
From what to what?
Well, I'm thinking we can have a corporal position.
Okay.
And 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 if possible, sergeant, but I I mean, look, we gotta, we're talking about trimming stuff back here, so I wanna just.
So. But let me, this is, this is my personal opinion on all this, and it's about negotiations, the contract expires this year, we are starting negotiations this year. All those other promotions were all part of contract negotiations in a very rich contract that raised costs by a hundred thousand dollars the following year, and then another hundred thousand dollars when we did all the promotions. So I don't believe personally that this should be in the budget to fund a corporal position, it is a negotiating position. And the P V A should tell us that this is so important to them, that they're willing to trade something else back to us, and it should be part of negotiations. And, you know, we know how long the last contract took with the police to negotiate, it was about a year, year and a half. The D P W contract took almost three years or three and a half years, so I don't think it should be this year.
Wasn't that because people switched off?
That was extended.
There wasn't, there wasn't that because people switched off?
This is not public hearing, I am sorry.
So 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 let me just, let me so the way I see it is that if you use the corporal position and 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 I would not say that it would be something that would happen now, it would be something that happened in the fourth quarter um as a promotion, and how much would that cost? Because, but that also is a a negotiating factor right there because we have given, and this is where we're given. And so when there, when it comes up, and I don't think it's appropriate to talk about this, like with with him right now, but I but I but I do think that we should kind of relook at that just in terms of fourth quarter and not now, and what that looks like, because I think that that could be something that we could talk up to, because I think at the end of the day, I think this this council and the council before, as you're saying, it's take a year and a half, whatever it took, um, fulfilled their obligation, we fulfilled the obligation, we said this is what we're gonna do and we did. Right? So it's, there's, there's no, there's no, like, you didn't do this, you didn't do that, cause that's not even up for grabs. So at the end of the day, if we're looking at um at promoting promoting a corporal, you know, that's something that we could look at, but here's my question to you, Bill. On the original budget, the one before this one, there was there was enough money in there because you had a secretary, full-time secretary, and then there was gonna be like twenty thousand dollars or something like that left over, if I'm not mistaken.
That's correct.
Okay, so that twenty thousand dollars is left over, if there were a promotion at the fourth quarter, what would that look like? And you don't need to give me that now, because I don't want that to be.
I can give. Well, no, it's it's in the contract, it's just what the differential between a top step and a corporal, it's for the year.
But in the fourth quarter, how much, how much would that cost?
Right, so it'll be five thousand six ninety six for a year, divide that by four, it's one thousand four twenty four for quarter.
So I don't think that's insurmountable. Marcia, I'm not, I'm not arguing your point, I think you're, you've got a very valid point, that's not what I'm arguing.
So.
Well. No, I know that.
But the point of it is, I think we just need to look at it another way.
Well, that's what I wanna talk.
To make it, to make it, well, hold on, let me finish with Marcia's point, because I, because she does have a very valid point.
Yeah. Yeah.
The the bottom line is, is that it's a matter, if it's a matter, if we wanna look at it and say, okay, this is what we're gonna do, so that when we are at the table, then we can talk to some things, and I don't, I definitely don't think this is the thing that we wanna do right now. But I'm just saying, that would spark some conversations. If if we, all I'm saying is if we do it what you're suggesting, I and I'm not disagreeing with it, that sparks a different conversation, that I don't want that conversation.
No, I'm just.
That's all I'm saying.
Funding this position even at fifteen hundred dollars is with the express understanding that it has gotta be part of the contract negotiations.
I'm fine with that, I I don't think that that's, I don't think that that's a bad idea, I really don't, I think that's a great idea.
I mean, I don't, you know, I don't have problems funding things in anticipation of something happening, cause if it happens like software for parking.
Right.
If it happens and we need it and it's not in the budget, we can't do it, in the budget, we can do it, so I don't have a problem with that, I just
To your point.
I don't want anybody thinking in this room, anybody in this room, whether they're up here or not, thinking something's gonna happen um, just because it's gonna do.
But just because the money's there doesn't mean that we have to do it, because it still has to be voted on by council, right?
Exactly. Right, correctly.
And so the point of it is, it's there, it's there, and based upon that, just put it in, and it's up to our discretion on what, I I think that's.
Right, right. Um, I truly believe this should be part of a contract, just like all the other promotions on the contract.
I believe you.
And and if I'm, I'm not disagreeing with, I just wanna offer a different perspective on it, you know, not not pardon me, I just, here's my perception of it, if I ask the chief police, why would you want a promotion in there? You say, well, it would motivate, it's good for morale, you know, give somebody to work hard towards something, um, and that's, we know this, obviously. But if you ask me, somebody who's looking at it as an institution, alright, now, let's put aside, you know, contract negotiations with with the officers' union, right? Um, if I'm looking at this as an institution, right, as as an elected official, I wanna make sure that people are in that institution who are doing their best work and most importantly, staying here.
Up in there.
Staying here, because there's a culture to the Flemington Borough Police Department, alright, it's not the same as any other police departments, different. Small town, totally different. Now, I also worry about people hopping to other departments if they're unhappy. I also worry about people being punched if they have like a really great skill, like for example, being bilingual, alright? So what would incentivize a position would be to do that, alright? To to, I understand a position of leaving it for a contract negotiation, but really, at the end of the day, this is the chief asking for this, the chief police asking for that, he can have this, he can hold this, and I'm looking at it from an institutional perspective. Um, and I just wanted to let you guys know my position on it, if you, if unanimously, you guys are like, no, you know, alright, Jeremy, no, nice try, buddy, but no. Okay, I'm not gonna say it personally, alright, but I have to do my due diligence as police commissioner tonight, and as the fire commissioner, right?
So. So here's my question, Marcia, when you, you said that Jerry told you that he didn't want anymore, when did he tell you that?
See, the day of all the promotions when we were over at the historic courthouse and I.
You mean last year?
Last year, and when all the promotions were done, and he said to me, I'm done, I don't need anymore, he didn't say even wanting more, he said, I don't need anymore. And I I called him a couple of weeks ago, when Bill told me that he had put in an email asking for more promotions, and I called Jerry and I said, it's not even a year, and you told me you didn't need anymore, he goes, yes, I know, I said that.
And what did he say then?
He said that it was a request from the P V N, and he, you know, he was gonna put in, we're gonna now, then this goes to.
Hmm, that's a, that's a little side, that's a little side note, okay, so wait a minute, hold on one second.
I I look. So, look, he's on your.
It's not, no, there's nothing wrong with what you're saying, I'm just asking the question, so you, now you said P V A.
Mm-hmm.
So are are you, are you, is.
I feel like I'm working ourselves over.
Well, here's, here's what, no, 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 I think, what I'm just trying to understand, so is it that he's he's doing it for the P V A, is he doing it because he really wants it? And what was your, what was your sense?
Um. I can't read his mind, I cannot read his mind, and all I know is he told me with a surety
You know, I mean, that's the.
whatever that month was, when we did all these promotions, was it May, was it June, uh, following, following the contract that he needed no more. And so not even a year later, he's asking for more, and out of the contract, now out of a contract. And so, look, I mean, my my upbringing in contract negotiations in local government is, you know, you don't give away anything, anything because you can't, if you give it away, you're, you now have lost the chip, and I'm I'm sorry, I guess, I got two officers here.
That that's not only, that's not only a government.
And, you know, I'm not gonna tell you I'm uncomfortable talking about this, cause I'm not. Uh, I am not uncomfortable talking about this, um, but it is, it is the way it is, I mean, you know, they're gonna, they're gonna try to get as much as they can
Of course.
and we're gonna try to like, give them something fair.
Of course. Of course.
But but did I just give something and then something back doesn't happen, it doesn't happen.
But, okay, so Jeremy, I I just feel that we can all understand, Jeremy, so when you talk to 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 the police, police.
You're kicking me out.
What 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 was, what was your sense? Because I hear what you're saying, is, but he said that he need, he he needed to do this for the morale of the department, right?
All the reasons I stated, all the reasons.
Okay, so he's he's sold that this would help with with letting people know that things, that their promotions are.
And it it gives him something to, like here.
But it also then justifies him needing more officers below, because if you build a pyramid, you need to have troops below to lead, so.
Well, that's. Well. One, one quick thing.
Or.
We did, we did, we did, I guess.
I'm so, I'm teaming up a lot of executive directors, okay, it's.
So we said, yes, to a full-time receptionist.
Yes.
And I don't, I'm I'm certain I shared this detail with many of you, is, you know, we do have a situation where the police officers are taking on those duties of the.
Right, so I think we're all, I'm I'm trying to send a more.
And we're not.
But in a few months, I don't know the exact time, but you are gonna have an officer who's gonna be out patrolling, so that's gonna be.
Right, and you said.
Who doesn't have to do paperwork, which is.
Correct, so so this is offsetting a little bit.
Great. And I know, I think all of them, like we're all. I think even that, do the two lieutenants go out?
Yeah, they both go out.
Cause I know the sergeants all go out.
Yes.
Um, but the two lieutenants go out as well.
Yeah.
Okay.
That was probably, that was probably, that was definitely one of the conditions of promoting the the is the one lieutenant.
Yes. Right.
It was the condition that you have to be out. Um, so let me ask, let me ask the council then, what do you, what do you guys think about um the corporal funding for a quarter? Give me Jerry's ass, Jerry's ass, Jeremy's ass, I'm sorry, too many Js and and an E.
But I was gonna say, like, I just, I I've gotten so confused, we've talked so much about this, um, the one seven one five that was initially proposed before, that had the secretarial stuff, right? Did it?
It had, no, the original had a part-time special and a part-time secretary
It had a part-time secretary.
And the council.
I'm sorry, it had a part-time one and third.
The special office.
That, that the council eliminated the part-time special and made the secretary full-time.
Right. Okay. And did that leave?
But it left the number the same.
Did that leave enough room for the corporal?
For the quarter of a year yet.
Promotion.
Yeah, yes. Yes.
For a quarter of a year.
But also, Bill, right now, in this budget you have, you have built in one more officer and two sergeant positions, so if we pull those two sergeants, put in a corporal and pull the one officer.
Can I just say, Bill, it is essentially, Bill, Bill did not build this budget, Bill followed directions and put in everybody's request.
Can't that.
We're back.
This is not Bill's budget.
It's not a criticism of Bill.
No.
But it's just like, it's the terminology of the budget Bill built, he didn't build this budget.
So, yeah, basically.
But when you write it in Excel.
There you have it, thank you.
And I said, you block those numbers, it basically goes back to my original number, which, you know, if you pull the extra officer and the.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
It goes back to one seven every time, correct?
I was fine with one sevens, well, that seems fine, this is, I mean, this increase here is sixty three percent of the total increase we have to deal with here.
Exactly. Right.
So like, you know.
But the point of it is, is that, going back to your point, is that if we kept it like it originally was, you can do both, and it's not harming the budget, is that correct?
Correct.
We get what we did.
Okay, so then that's, that's, there's your answer.
And then everything else would go.
Then there's your answer.
Everything else would go.
So I mean, right, I think the council needs to decide is that, are you, are you, um, are you?
Will you support Jeremy, Jeremy?
Jeremy's ass.
Damn, Jerry.
Jeremy's ass.
Come on. But tell the law.
We were in the same group together.
Oh, my God, that just, yeah. That's in a sympathy's called A P E, and it just really pisses me off daily.
I would not have seen that.
So, um, so are we, you guys report of what what Jeremy is asking and he doesn't do?
The potential of a corporal promotion, sure, that's.
Excuse them?
He was in that number.
Brandon?
Yeah, I'm on board.
Sunshine?
Yeah, um, sunshiney, using that number from the prior, yes, I would invite.
Okay, so then I think we're all there. But using the prior number, get rid of the rest of this, we're not gonna do the sergeant, right?
Not doing the extra officer.
We're not doing the extra officer, we're getting rid of all of that.
Okay, we're not doing a corporal until we're in contract.
We're putting the money in.
Right, yeah.
So let's, let's, let's just make sure we just put the money in, once we talk about.
The money's already there, the money's already there. Can we, can we, uh, while I'm being screwed, Mr. Bad Guy here.
Yeah, no, Mark, you're asking good questions.
No, it's Kevin, my. Um. As your first aid organization contribution, uh, I just wanna say this. Um, it went from ten to thirteen, Bill originally had ten in, Bill did increase their request for capital and he increased it, not what they asked, he increased it by our share, which, you know, Jeremy has been.
Well, that's with Raritan, is that the Raritan?
Flemington Rescue Squad.
That's the share, yeah.
So Jeremy has been reporting call numbers every single month for a couple of years now, and every single month I average out what our call app ratio is. And every single month, we are either one, not not, less than one quarter of the calls, and not more than one fifth of the calls. So, um.
So why are we paying more?
So so Bill averaged out the request that they asked for uh in capital and gave them what was our seemed to be a fair portion, proportion. And I just also wanna add regarding this request to go up in operating that the rescue squad is in Flemington Borough, it is tax exempt.
Exactly, exactly.
I checked with the tax assessor prior to the assessed values going up in the borough and this borough is providing a twenty four thousand dollar tax rateable to them. It'll now cap well over twenty five thousand with the new value, except property is very valuable because it is on, you know, two major highways.
You're talking about for Raritan, right?
I'm talking about Flemington, Flemington Rescue Squad.
I'm sorry.
The crafty.
Okay, I.
I'm basically arguing at my own peril and risk to bring it back down to the bottom.
I lost, I lost.
So I'm gonna drive very carefully till I'm gonna go home.
Big big ten, what?
Yeah, their their original, their original amount they'll put in versus what they asked for, they asked for thirteen.
Ten thousand.
Um.
But they gave who, Marcia?
The rescue squad.
So, so where's the capital, uh, where's the line where that capital?
But your capital, we don't even do until a month after we're done.
No, the capital is in the budget, the capital line, I.
That's what I wanted.
Yeah.
Well, where is it? Um, here, that's, I'm looking for it too.
Then can I just go back to what you're pointing, can I just go back to what you're asking?
Yeah.
So the point of it is, is that thirteen thousand is what they.
They asked, what do we, our rescue squad asked for.
Flemington Borough.
Okay, there's okay, one of them, everyone's.
So that's your most relevant, is that, so the ten thousand, that includes our fair share, is that correct?
So something. Something. Ten thousand is what we'd be able to do as a contribution, cause they're operating towards that. Our fair share that I'm talking about is for vehicles in there.
Oh, oh, okay, I'm sorry, you, I, that's, you completely lost me.
They asked for, they asked us for well more than our fair.
Right, that makes sense, so you're saying that if we go back to ten thousand, what what's that?
Cause we're only fifteen, there was twenty five thousand dollars for your taxes. Right?
No, I'm okay, I'm okay.
And if.
Are you guys okay with that?
And if the press was here, I would do a whole thing about it. And if the press was here, I would do a whole thing about it, um.
Are you okay?
We're all talking over each other.
I will send you back down to ten, I'm gonna go on this, I'm not giving the finish.
Yeah, okay, I'm.
Don't you know, pay one, this is the other ten.
Okay, okay, hold on, hold on, are you okay going back to, as long, wait, we have to.
As long as I know where the capital money is in the squad, where is that? Cuz I lost track, page five.
Yeah, where is it on this?
Page five. Page five at the bottom.
But they're not marked, they're paid, they're not marked.
Mine is.
It's not marked.
Here, I can.
Not marked, no.
So, so page five, is is it under?
You'll see, purchase of ambulance towards the bottom.
It is the purchase of the ambulance.
Yes, I see it.
That's, that's what I pointed.
For thirty thousand.
They asked, they asked us for ninety.
Well, they asked them.
No, two hundred.
They asked the third.
They asked us for two fifty.
They asked them for two seventy, I believe, obviously.
Two hundred and seventy?
Which was like one, was like, not a quarter.
Two hundred, two hundred and seventy?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, one seventy-five, two sixty-six.
One seventy-five.
For the, yeah, for the purchase of a.
One seventy-five?
I wish, yeah, right.
Refurishing an.
So the the purchase for the ambulance is at thirty?
So they're gonna take a loan, I guess, to buy, to do this, and then we're gonna pay.
So what, so what they, what they sent into Bill, they requested, they said, they want to buy a new ambulance that Raritan Township is gonna pay for. And they're refurbishing an old one, and they asked us to pay for that. Bill took both numbers, he added them together. And then he divided it by a fifth, because that's basically where our calls are, it's one fifth of Raritan Township's. And uh or should say, it's one fifth of everybody else's. Um, and.
And that doesn't take into account the the non-ratable.
It does not take in count the fact that we give them twenty-five thousand dollar property, we have to stick it over here.
Who's that, who's that?
Flemington Rescue Squad.
So, but when that, when the request is coming in, is it coming in from a borough side or from the?
It came in from Flemington Rescue Squad.
Oh, that is just.
It just came in from Rescue Squad asking us.
I was wondering if it's like somebody in control.
To eat about, it was like about a, more than a third, right, Bill, when you added up the what they were.
So, yeah, so their original, their request is, uh, Raritan pays two-thirds and we pay one-third.
And and only one quarter to one-fifth of the calls are in the borough in any given month. Because Raritan, they Rescue Squad, you know, hard attacks and accidents all over the, all over Raritan Township.
I mean, I I think it's it's foul, so do we want it to, Kim, are you guys okay to stick with the ten and not go to the thirteen?
I am, and we're giving them a nice increase, I mean, you ten thousand dollars.
Alright, then, then I would, then I would wipe it out and just go back to ten. Okay, what what's next? Jeremy, Jeremy, are we down with you?
I think I'm.
You know, I actually, I had, I had one more thing that might be on the police, um.
We're.
I know we get reimbursed for it, or at least we used to, but they're cutting the the class three officer, right, from the school budget? So is that still in our budget?
Yes, I thought that. Or.
So.
But we only have one, okay.
We only have one, and Jerry and I had a really long conversation about this class three.
Yeah.
Um, I'm sorry, I I misspoke, the mayor of Raritan Township and I had a really long conversation about this. Because one of the reasons that these all got cut is that Raritan Township was up to seventy dollars an hour on their class threes. And the school just could not afford it, and you know, our guy kept asking us for more and more increases. Jerry, not Jeremy, Jerry kept warning him that it was, you know, that we couldn't keep up with Raritan Township.
That's the letter we received.
So.
Yeah, we wanted to see that letter.
Correct, and we had given him several raises, uh but he wanted to, he wanted to be where Raritan Township was. And so Raritan Township basically blew this program because it got so expensive. So I said to the mayor, you know. There are, you know, cuz cuz when we started talking about hiring specials to do to do this whole traffic thing, Jerry told me flat out, there are always retired cops that are willing to come back to work, part-time. Um, and, you know, what the mayor of Raritan Township told me was that they were setting their rate by North Hundredan, high schools rate.
Oh my god.
And that all of the, all of the cops were saying, well, this is what North Hundredan is paying, and we're gonna go to North. So I'm like, well, then they should have gone to North, like, like, let them go to North, because you can find retired cops to do this work.
They're still playing schools.
So I said to the mayor, you, because he was gonna sit down and talk to the superintendent, and I said, see if we can do a reset.
Yeah.
Like, like, let them all go, if they don't wanna work for forty-five dollars an hour, which is what we pay our guy, let them all go to North Hundredan, and we'll let them, let Raritan Township hire new retired cops, and let's do a reset. So the mayor told me, he was gonna have that conversation with Kerry to see if this was dead-dad or if it was just too expensive, and I, and that was about a week ago.
How many hours do they work?
They work.
The school day, school day.
The whole school day.
So they were two hours at seventy dollars an hour?
At Raritan Township's rate, forty-five hours.
Ours is thirty-five.
Thirty-five, I'm sorry, thirty-five, so half of what Raritan's making.
They were at sixty.
They're at sixty.
They were at sixty.
That's what the mayor told me.
We know they were at sixty.
Apparently it was going up.
Maybe, but they were.
So.
But did they cut, did they cut them after?
They, oh, they all got laid off yesterday.
Who, for retired cops, no, it's.
They got, he got noticed yesterday.
Yeah, but so, so I would leave personally, whoever brought the.
So then he got rid of all the classes?
I would leave it in the budget that the, that the mayor of Raritan Township may be able to.
So that's sixty thousand dollars worth saving.
Because like it only affects, you know.
It's a sixty thousand.
We're only doing the warm-up hearing.
Right, but, you know, and they've been, like, they're having, like, town halls in Raritan Township over this because people are so upset about it in Raritan. And they have a lot of schools there, and they also do the high school. So, I, you know, I don't know what Kerry and Dan's gonna say or do that.
The school day, they're gonna announce that they were keeping one, that's gonna be at JP case.
Why there?
That's where they have the most.
Those schools are the most.
The most problems.
It's still that, well, it's also the.
Oh, it's also the large middle school, yeah.
Okay.
Also the larger.
Alright, so we're staying here.
Both staying. So, but Craig and the rest of the Raritan officers were all like, noticed that the last school day of the year will be their last day.
I, I can't, I can't stress enough that, you know, how much, um. I appreciate this keep staying in our budget.
I think it's, I mean, I.
You know, for the one school that we do have, and it's very, it's it's really, it's our responsibility, it's the school's responsibility
I think the school has a responsibility.
that that we make sure that this is here.
I think, I think the school has a serious responsibility.
I completely agree with you, Marsha, but meanwhile, you know, I I, but I do agree, we can, there's only so many schools, and there's only so many. You know, there's, there's probably more retired cops than there are schools, so I I I think that I'm not so much worried about the competitive rate. Um, I think if our rate is lower, um, I think that's fine, but I do really feel strongly that we should keep it in there.
Right, but it wasn't, it was never, let me just maybe, Kerry and I talked about this in twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four, it was never about our rate. It was only.
I realize that, I I got your point, yeah.
Okay, alright, well, this is good, so we're gonna, so this is good, alright, so.
So. I saw.
So right now, it's still.
So Craig, we still have problems, right?
No, I was saying, so right now, that is still in the budget, or is it?
Yes, because this is the first I'm hearing about it, but the problem lies that it's, it's not in the police budget, it's in a separate line item.
Yeah.
Right, the bottom of page four, school resource officer, fifty thousand, and it has an offsetting revenue, because the school pays us the sixty thousand.
Yeah. Mm-hmm.
So if you're saying that the school is not gonna pay us the sixty thousand.
No, no, they have to pay. Under ten oh twenty-six, this is their responsibility, it's not our responsibility, they're important.
Oh, no, but I think I, I.
But after this year, they.
But they have to pay, yeah.
That's, I think what he, yeah, that's the question.
Just nobody's there.
After twenty twenty-five.
After June.
If they're June of this year, if they're saying they're getting rid of them.
But what happens if September, they say, okay, we're gonna put it back, surprise, then what?
Well, that's the problem, yeah.
So why can't we just leave it in the budget the way it is? If we don't get the offsetting revenue, we don't hire Craig Duck.
Okay, that's fine, yeah.
Yeah.
That's what I'm saying, right?
Correct.
But do you believe that this needs to remain in here, but it's.
Well, if if you leave it in then, then.
You wanna take it out?
Huh?
No, 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 I'm saying, it, like you said, you know, if they change their mind halfway through, right, that's, that's an option for us, you know, if they change their mind halfway through. To keep this in their budget somehow, and we'll keep them on, but if that revenue is gone, and we're not gonna receive it for the rest of the year.
Then we don't.
And then that's.
There's gotta be the offsetting revenue there, to to keep it in.
Yeah. It has to be.
Just say you're aware, that's all.
So we can keep it as in.
Please.
Not until they get.
So do you keep it in up until June, and then you just kind of take it off from September to December, and they're receiving it in January? That's my question.
So we. No, so what the mayor's suggestion is to keep the whole noun in there. If they're not gonna give us the money to reimburse us, we're not gonna hire the officer, so it'll be a wash.
Oh, okay, okay, I see. So you just keep it in as a line item?
Right, with offsetting revenue, so it doesn't hurt the overall budget.
Okay, alright, that's fine.
Cuz we technically have a signed contract for the school for this year.
For this year, I was. Right, but that's through the school, it's not through the officer.
Okay, so, so then now we're up to, there's the, there's the thing with the, um, eleven thousand for border health?
Correct.
From the ten thousand to eleven thousand?
Shut up, it went down.
That number.
Oh, yeah, our threshold went down, why we're gonna.
The threshold's down.
Why wouldn't we discuss anything that goes down?
Yeah, we're, we're only doing things that are, that are.
I don't know, it's yellow.
Oh.
It is yellow.
Oh, I can see that.
Yeah, well, if I go to the hotel.
It's changed.
Well, cuz it changed, anything that changed.
Right.
Oh, I need to.
Yeah, 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 we're.
So visiting homemaker, is that an increase that the county's imposing on us, cuz they.
No, not visiting homemaker, it's border health.
Yes, border health.
Border health.
It's just through services, I I assume, um.
Oh, sorry. Yeah.
The district staff, that's.
What's.
I mean, it's, it's a.
So what is that?
We use the county services.
Correct, the county is charging.
So they have to inspect, they charge us to inspect all the restaurants.
Well, they charge that, they charge that.
So they're increasing our fees?
Yes.
I don't know if they're increasing our fees or.
I haven't seen any bills.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
So we requested an extra thousand bucks.
Someone put, uh, gave me something that said eleven, I don't know, but.
Somebody from the council?
It's, I don't know, it was in my box, I always.
So you haven't gotten a bill this year yet?
Uh, I don't think so.
So maybe it might come from like Murray, might have sent something in there?
How, what do they use when it's our just per?
It's usually around the ten. So why?
No, I'm saying per establishment, cuz like in Clinton Township, it was like two hundred dollars per restaurant. But since you're, we're.
No, I don't think.
So, so, wait, so, if, do they, if we have more establishments to inspect, the fees go up, right? So is this an anticipation of the union hotel inspections, when they open up as restaurants and bars?
Correct, cuz they charge. It's possible, it's possible. It could be.
I know, and plus all the events, they go to like all.
I mean, it's okay.
But the events are the, the, so we know, but.
You mean far.
But my point is, if, when the union hotel bars and restaurants open, they're going to be paying fees to offset this revenue.
Yeah.
So that's, correct, so that's the problem is, like, next year, we can have that offsetting revenue, but we don't have that right now.
Right, so they're asking for more money this year even though they're not open yet.
Correct.
An anticipation of having to go there once they open.
Po- possibly because of how much, what they're expecting.
Probably, that's.
So what happens if we just put in ten and then the bill comes in at more?
If it comes at eleven, we transfer money in November to the line, and we forgot to.
But they're not gonna open it until like.
It's the last quarter of the year.
Right, so by the time the county sends the bill, it's probably January.
Right, but being the county seat, did they, did they charge us?
Yeah.
Yes. I heard, no.
No, they.
Who told you?
I don't remember when I first started.
Give me your name, I'll go ahead.
I, yeah, I, Humphrey, I don't know.
How you guys even you mentioned this thing?
I'm running for the county.
Oh, okay, so, so are we gonna keep it in, or are we gonna take it at ten?
I see, keep it at ten.
Okay, so we're gonna take that off, keep it at ten. So what about, what about, what about dog?
Oh, I've got, yeah, that. Yeah, are we still regulated? Yeah, that was one of my questions.
What, what are we, are we missing from here?
That went down.
Is the next page missing?
No, that's it.
No, that regulation went up.
So regulation went up.
No, well, it went up, sorry, it went up from twenty-five four, but it went down from what was originally.
Correct, yeah, I I had put Warren, or uh, when what, the original.
So.
Sorry, that's not.
So. So I have eighteen five.
What, you took dog regulation, what happens with that?
But that's, okay, so that is one of our escrow accounts, right? All the dog licensing money.
Trust trust. Must by law go to do dog stuff, or pet stuff.
Okay.
And we gotta pay the state.
And we have to pay the state, so.
So that's the eighteen five?
Yeah, well, it depends on how many dogs and pets we license per month.
But we have, we have enough money, we get enough money to offset this.
But we also offset.
No, we don't get enough money to, uh, licenses, dog set, the whole contract, we don't, no way.
Oh, we need more dogs, oh, really?
We also, we did raise and raise, but not by much.
This, this amount.
I know, I think we need to raise this.
This amount of budget is on top of what is in the trust fund.
Oh, really?
You know what, I'm not, I'm opposed to it.
Because we're paying for.
I'm, I really think so.
You know, when they, um, like, if they find a hundred stray cats or whatever, they take them to the vet, we have to pay for the vet. Boarding and all that kinda stuff, and so we get extra bills for that, it's, it's on top of the the regular contract.
Yeah.
So we have to pay for stray cats?
Well, if, if, I'm not saying.
Or like a bat, or skunk or something.
It's in your house, right.
Have we received that in the past?
Yes.
I, I don't recall them, I, I, I never received them.
I've never seen.
I've never seen this.
I've never seen the.
It should be on the report that they sent you.
They never, they, they didn't talk about, never charged them money or anything like that.
They always send the.
They always send the.
No, there's no money attached to the, any of the reports, it's just.
So for us, so the better.
This is what was, there's a bat, there's a skunk, there's a cat, there's a dog, there's no money attached to any of those reports.
Cuz they don't.
But there is money there, we're asking this.
Well, yes, there is, but we should be, we should, we, their reports should connect that.
But they do that forever now.
Right.
Any animal control will charge you that.
Huh?
So.
I said, any animal control will charge you that.
Then picking up those stray cat is in the contract, but then having to board the stray cat.
They have a contract to open it.
Now costs the money.
Yes.
And then, and what if they pick up a dog, and they've got the dog being housed somewhere, and the the dog's owner shows up?
And that will.
Does the owner have to pay for the boarding, or do we still eat the boarding?
That's a good question.
Uh, I don't think.
But isn't, isn't Cory the, um, animal control or?
No, he's the, he's the humane officer, so like if there was a case of like abuse of an animal, he would investigate it and charge. But the animal control officer is the one that comes out, picks up the dog, does the rabies testing, if there's a bite.
It's.
Correct, they, the animal control officer deals with issuing the fines if a pet is unlicensed, so it's two different things.
So. So, I'm just, I'm just curious, why it went up a thousand dollars, that's all.
Did their contract?
Well, it's not, went up, maybe, um, no, the contract's for three years, so.
We're, we're.
Okay, go. Yeah, but it can exist.
Uh, July of this year goes up, or it.
Renews, yeah.
So maybe we take a look at.
Maybe more, so we need it another thousand.
On green.
So maybe it's just.
No, I put in extra, we're, we're, Green asked for less, I put in more.
Oh, you put. Oh, okay, cuz you're anticipating it going up.
I'm anticipating going up, because you said that it, we only have a contract through July, so we don't know where we're gonna be after that.
Right.
So, so it, it, but it would only, we would only incur an increase for like four, five months, right?
Okay.
Six months.
Yeah.
What is July, right, five months?
Mm-hmm.
So is this for five months, this increase, or is it?
It's, it's an, yes, it's an anticipation of that, and.
Okay, I'm just.
He's anticipating the.
No, I'm just asking the question, if it's for a year or for five months, that's what I'm asking, okay.
So, I guess the north's next, then is.
The building inspector.
Yeah, that's.
This one went really high.
I'm, I'm.
So what is this about?
I'm literally stunned at what that is.
So this is when, uh, you had your council retreated, he came in and gave you all, um, what is, we proposed, he, he wants a fifteen thousand dollar increase.
Yeah, I know.
He wants, uh, twelve thousand dollars for an elevator inspector, uh, five thousand for a deputy's construction official. Five thousand dollar increase for the taco.
Let's, let's, let's slow down, okay, let's, let's take these apart.
Okay.
Alright, this original budget that you built, Bill, gave all of the non-union employees a three and a half percent raise without them asking for it.
Correct.
It's generous, and it's in line with the police and the DPW's raises, and inflation, so everybody was getting a three and a half percent raise. And whatever else anybody was asking for, I think the council was pretty nonplussed about it. Regarding the deputy position, where he wants a deputy to cover him when he's on vacation, he doesn't get paid vacation. So whoever is gonna substitute for him, I think it's Dave Giuliani, they should just get his, the Ken, and Ken should just get whatever salary he's not earning, cuz he doesn't get paid vacation
No.
as a part-time employee.
Who?
Huh?
Who doesn't get vacation?
John.
John.
Yes, he does.
Why would he get vacation?
You think he paid vacation?
Suppose you and him agreed to it.
Paid vacation?
When you, when he, you hired him.
Is it in the resolution or not?
I don't know, I know, he gets, he can take off the time he needs, but he's a part-time employee, he can get paid vacation.
As a part-time employee.
I'm not even sure that's allowed under law.
Well, as a part-time, let you get a, as amount of hours, you know, for every, it depends on how many hours you work.
Have you been, have you been paying it when he's taken off?
I don't remember him putting in for vacation, but look.
Okay.
He sent me an email, so I'm gonna, it's okay with everybody, I'm, I'm gonna need it, or you can read it. Uh, so we all got that letter, um, after retreat, so, um, and I think that in, I, I do wanna give him the benefit of the doubt in that he didn't know about the three and a half percent that we had planned as well, so I think this was also written prior to that request, at least the, the one we received at the, at the retreat, so I'll give him the benefit of the doubt on that. Um, so, construction official, he has fifteen annual increase, fifteen K, the taco, uh, he has, um, five grand. Um, those, I think, we just if, take into account the three and a half percent, or whatever that is, instead of those two numbers, is what my recommendation would be. The fire subcode, uh, he has, again, two thousand annual, like, these are all the salary increases, so again, I think we just do the three and a half percent like we are doing everybody else instead. Um, but then he says, plus a five thousand dollar stipend for acting as the construction official in my absence. That's the part that we're discussing, that's the, the Ken part, um, but I think there is another way of doing that, I think.
Who's that?
I think if.
Kevin Corrigan.
Ken.
So he's, he's the, the.
He is there, he is John's backup.
For subcode.
Right, so, I, I, again, it's, I think this is almost like the same as the, the, um, uh, the car going to two different places. We can either put it in this line item to, as a backup, or we can put it in. We can either put it in this line item to as a backup, or we can put it in um the 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 proposed that that Marcia had as as the as the line item for the for the backup, either way, we need a backup, but I don't necessarily know if it's appropriate for this line item, you know, does that make you follow me?
Well, the question is, are we paying twice or are we paying once? And that's really the question.
E- exactly, that's likely.
Since when, when Carla is out, Maureen covers for her, when Maureen is out, Liz covers for her. We don't pay Liz extra to cover for Maureen, we don't pay Maureen extra to cover for Carla. So you know, I mean, if we've got all these part-time employees and we're gonna be covering and paying them to cover for the people.
That's the but but that's but that's what a part-time employee does, is it covers.
Right.
Apparently, I mean, there's no, there's no increase for covering, you just cover.
Right, right.
I think that the the taco did, the taco did bring to my, let let me finish my report, please. The the taco did bring to my attention that there is a need to have a formal organized backup, and Ken has his own work to do, so we wanna make sure that we're taking that into account. So it's not just John that's expressed the need for this, but I don't necessarily know if it's being accounted for in the right way financially.
So so how did the five thousand dollars come about?
I, he says five thousand dollars stipend, I that's, I think it was just an estimate on his part, honestly. Now remember, now now remember, Tony, he's al- he's also considering what we've been discussing a lot in that I think he wrote this a while ago because cause bills have this for a while. Um, I think that you know, not knowing when the hotel's gonna open, this is also a, you know, something that's not gonna hit to the last quarter either. So let me, let me um, let me finish what he said, so the plumbing subcode and electrical subcode, he is estimating as two thousand annually. These increases are in addition to the, yeah, okay. So I believe those are the uh the additions to the electrical and plumbing were again in anticipation of additional inspections, correct? For plumbing and electrical, that's what I was explaining to me.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, I'd like to know more than I need to know.
Um, let's see, and then what he he finalized his comment was these increases are intended to secure a full and consistent code office and inspection team, the climate for code officials and inspectors is very competitive due to retirements and labor shortages in the state, which we do know is true. Um, these are requests, not demands, of course, and I will rely on the council's determination regarding these increases, also if needed, I could present myself.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
So with the all the layoffs that's going on in the federal sector, with the lot of pressure on it, do we expect that there's still gonna be a shortage, or do we expect they will start up and run a climate?
Well, I think there, it's very, very difficult for anybody in the state of New Jersey to get um to get certified, so even though the federals are being laid off, none of them have the state certification.
Right, but they might have state certification.
And there's such a, yeah, but there is enormous backup, like I I don't know what the problem is with the state, but it's almost impossible to get the classes, to even sign up for the classes to get the silly certification, I mean, it's 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 a ridiculous system and I'm not defending it by any means. What I want to also finally note with the code uh official department, apparently John didn't necessarily talk to the zoning official, the only thing the zoning official is requesting is an iPad. So it so it it I wanted to add that in there.
Did you say an iPad?
And iPad, so he can actually be working remotely when he's out, um you know, cause it's so that he's
Well.
so I I do wanna bring that uh to everybody's attention, I think we should be able to find that somewhere.
Okay, so.
So so John does to us, John, John does.
So I I feel wanna understand this, I I think the problem is for me is that it's is this actually reasonable and is each one of those on, cause when you go down to like plumbing inspector, doctor, doctor inspector, they have, they already have their own ass, right?
Yeah.
So is he rolling that up to that as?
I think he's acting as the head of the department and asking overall, but they're not necess- like I said, some of these are already covered in other line items, so I think we need to take that with a grain of salt.
So what, so.
Then they're all getting three and a half percent, three percent salary.
Exactly, yeah.
Okay, so do we just nix this and go back to this and say that you're getting three and a half percent or?
Yeah, exactly.
Okay.
But but I.
Well, for him, it's three and a half.
Okay, so.
Y'all is not fifty thousand, just say no.
Say that again?
For him, it's nineteen hundred dollars, not fifteen thousand.
Yeah, but you know, I mean.
Fifteen thousand dollars, I listen, let me just say this, and well, it doesn't matter, even in a, in a, I I've never heard of anybody
I know.
as getting a fifteen thousand dollar raise.
John does a really great job, but.
Yeah, but a fifteen thousand dollar raise?
I think we pay him fairly, and I think a three and a half percent raise. You know, when I mentioned it to Carla, she was pretty wound by it, happy, nobody at my office got three, three and a half percent raise this year.
Well, per per retiring um resolution, he does get um sixty hours of paid time off.
How many?
Sixty hours per per year.
In addition to that.
Per retiring resolution, in addition, he gave us.
But Connie doesn't get anything.
Right.
Cause nothing's in hers, and she's poor.
Right. Right. Nobody was part of the negotiation on salary.
Can you, can you get ten mileage reimbursement, twenty miles every day?
Yes.
It's worth it.
I did.
Oh, yeah, that's it, that, yeah, that's what.
How how is he doing twenty miles a day of?
So he cannot by law ask for door to door from his home, that's a, I mean, federal government service. IRS does not recognize, yeah, he's asked me about, and I can't, I'm sorry, you know, he's asked me, he asked me last month of the day,
First time you brought it to my attention.
and I meant to ask you, cause the federal IRS regulations do not provide for.
Commuting.
Commuting, so there's no way he can be doing, like, he could.
Yes.
We have police officers that don't do three miles.
Walk. So he could like find out about that, but and I'll tell you, I mean, if you, you know, we're giving him fair compensation, if we're giving him sixty hours, sixty hours of vacation time on top of it, then he's.
Hours, yeah.
Sixty hours?
I think, yeah, so he's getting a really fair, you know.
I think the 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 fact that the that the taco was
That's twenty hours.
Yeah.
was adamant that that she felt she 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 wasn't necessarily comfortable with with this even being this, you know, presented on the behalf of one that's coming around.
No, he he did, so he got dollars, it's okay.
Right.
But I don't, you know, I'm not, that's that's what it is, so we're just gonna do the three and a half percent.
It's really.
Yeah.
Where are we next on this?
So I'm gonna get the iPad in there.
Okay, so then then the next ones are the the inspectors, all these.
I can give up a ratio. No, they're all getting three and a half percent.
Okay, so then this is all an all-in voyage?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, so then I think, are we done?
No, we also, well, we we have to reconcile any differences, so.
But Bill, where are we with reconciling all of that?
So, okay, so the seventeen.
Well, we're, go back to Carla, asking Carla saying she did the little twenty, she got, and we had twenty four in here.
Yeah, I can score.
Did you put the numbers in as we were talking?
I did, but so. What did, so what did you put down for Carla? I put twenty for Carla, but that's up fifteen hundred dollars. And then I, and then. My words down, right? We need to put the other community workers and kids out there.
So the the uh.
Oh, right.
Yeah.
Where, what's the bottom line, where is the difference? I have like.
I know those are capital improvements, it's like, yeah, but don't, but aren't they listed like in twenty nine?
Can we take this and go back to this? We went back to this, right?
No, we went back to seventeen one, seventeen or seven, seventy eight.
Oh, seventy eight, seventy eight.
Seventy eight thousand for police. Oh, it's for police, where you said, the pet now, no, he was now, now.
No, 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 no.
Fire, fire safety, seventy eight.
What police job?
And the, right, and the police went down to one.
The police went back to the one, the original, no, one six.
One seventy, one thousand, one seven six or something.
No, one six.
One six, one six, and then OEM went up to the eight, up to eighty seven fifteen.
But we took it out.
We took out, put days that that seventy three, was it seventy five hundred?
Except with seven thirty three.
Okay, so actually now, yeah, you're actually like uh
We left it.
point zero zero one.
What is it now?
You're you're less than you were the original. The original had your tax rate at um.
How is that possible when we're doing more my to this one?
Because planning board, planning board reduced.
Okay, on reduce, you like I said that, this one, and environmental commission reduced.
And um. Correct, I think those two.
But and the police budget, no, the police interesting, cause it has some.
Then the police made a. Oh, it's the same thing, same, same, yes.
But what did you do about the portage on?
I think.
I, that's not in there, so that's one thing that's still up.
Well, that's what I was gonna say is I I, but where are some of the other line items and like, do we have a list in the capital budget of the things that like the the wish lists that we had discussed, like the like the park and the, you know, the volunteer, you know?
That's not capital, that's operating, so capital would be the reticulating weights, right?
Okay, those were, those are also on my list here that I write down.
That's capital, but.
We have a list of what's in.
But your portages are operating, and your mulch is operating, and the
Okay. software for the parking system is what Bill, is that operating, is that, is that capital? So I think the multi was on my list.
I have a question, why? Why are we paying for multi, the that would be capital. Why are you paying for multi?
Well, Susan, why are you paying for mulch if we're getting it for free? Cause last year they didn't do much, cause we.
Right, last year we didn't have any mulch, could be okay, so.
And they had.
They wouldn't allow them to do it.
They had to purge it all out, there was some issue with it.
Right, right, so I just bought it.
But I think they're, but this is doing this year.
You're doing it this year, cause we figured it out.
So I can use, I don't have to buy the mulch, right, I can go, I can get that.
Right, they don't, they don't, they don't tell, 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 you're in the tell, my campaign, reverse the mulch, you don't.
The reason.
Is, but is it ready? Cause they had to blow everything out, does it, how many years does it take?
No, he's got enough time, no, no.
No, he's announced that, he's got, he's got.
They're the reason.
It's in the newsletter, that's right, okay.
No, that's right, okay.
Yeah, and okay, so you don't, you still want rocks.
Yeah, well, no, Mike has all, like, those kind of supplies, they they have them in there, it's the portage on,
So it's a cap number, it's thirty three thousand dollars.
it's the 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 volunteer event that we talked about and the, you know, like to recognize the volunteers in town on a yearly basis that we haven't done since pre-COVID. And the portage on and, you know, cleanup, the cleanup event.
So let's let's take the portage ons first. So that's what, thirty five hundred?
How much is that, Bill?
Uh, I think we estimated three thousand.
Three, right.
Maybe thousand.
We are on that page. So what's the, what's the other cap number right now?
I gotta plug it into the actual.
Is that for the whole year?
What?
No, I think.
No, it's only the summer month.
Oh, good.
Yeah.
It's like six, it's like six months, like.
Why pay for the winter?
May to October or something like that.
Somebody's using wool.
No, we are.
Somebody will use it as a wool, it's.
That's what I'm saying.
The rail company, what applies and what else?
I'm trying to find the paper with it all. Um, the park cleanup, the park cleanup was, but we're not, we don't need to get the paper more anymore, so, you know, it, I think that was
I saw my question.
There's something else there now. Um, the parking committee, there were cross, crosswalks were in the capital.
Mm-hmm.
And I I'd like to, I'd like to understand, but I don't think we were copied on, like, all these line items that we often say, well, that's in the capital budget, well, that's in the capital budget.
The capital budget doesn't get done for, it's not a part of the budget, capital budget is done your track. What's after this budget, this is.
I understand that, but we're but we're saying, we're saying those crosswalks are in the budget, so I, there is some sort of draft list of capital of the of in the capital budget.
Creation education?
Yes.
Right, I mean, there there has, there's there's a draft list.
Yes, I have, I have a draft list, yes.
Yeah, so maybe when, I know you're busy, but maybe when you get a chance, could you send us that draft? Um, so we can really get a handle on where did some of these things live, right?
Okay.
Like the, like the fireworks is in the capital budget, the five thousand.
Yeah, the fireworks going down, they're not free.
No, 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 not free.
They're on the line item here?
No, no, they're under purification.
No, there was five thousand in the notification, there's four.
Okay, all right, so there, so that's not in the capital budget.
Nope, they don't have a lifespan on the finders, they have a lifespan of like five seconds, so.
Done. Done. Um, and the uh, by the way, I talked to Mark King today, we got another, yeah, um another, I think fifteen hundred from Parks Insurance.
And he's, he's doing a great job.
Yeah, um, and uh
Okay.
the volunteer recognition that you got that we had, we had talked about, uh, we hadn't had.
And where do you want us to go with this, Susan?
Well, I don't, I don't know, that's, I was just asking where these, these were things that we talked about that I don't know where they, where they live.
How much are they?
Well, I, Bill knows what the cost of the of the event was in the past. I'm not suggesting we necessarily do as big of event in the past, because you know, we don't need to do alcohol and things like that, but we should have some sort of recognition for the volunteers. Those are, I think everything else that I had was already answered.
You mean reorg dinner?
I've never.
I don't know, I don't know what it is, yeah, I know the reorg dinner, when you say.
Well, that's what I'm calling it.
It happened at the volunteer of the year and employee of the year happened at that, that would be.
Right, exactly, but but there was a suggestion that it not necessarily be on that day, so that's why I don't wanna call it that, I just.
Yes.
Okay.
Calling some sort of volunteer recognition there.
So I asked, I asked the right now to find out where we are with the cap.
So because we took the ten thousand of OEM and put it into the grants, we're actually fourteen thousand under.
Because you took what?
The ten thousand dollars from OEM.
For the EM, whatever that is, Grant, you put that into the grant.
EM, yeah.
And put it as a grant.
Okay.
It's out of the appropriations cap for.
Okay, so they're with fourteen thousand?
Overland, yeah?
Correct, fourteen thousand.
So Susan's portage ons can go in with her again?
Oh, yeah, well, like.
Well, I gotta, I gotta see the, if the.
But you don't have to. That's, you don't have to have the five different things.
Yeah.
Oh, oh, got it, oh, right, does that wait for a percent increase?
Too many people.
Yeah, the goal is keep the ten percent increase.
Got it, got it.
Cause it's, you're you're under the levy cap by like uh a couple hundred thousand, so that's.
I thought we never did that before with Brian's grant.
We've done it in the past, um, but it was, it offset the twenty that was in there.
And I just also wanna remind the council, whatever new things you put in the budget it's gonna be sustainable for the future, and we had a good year this year, it's surplus, and then you were gonna have a good year over here.
I think that next year's gonna be a pretty, pretty good one. Two thousand twenty six.
Another stock thing?
Yeah, just today, four, yeah, where I, yeah, yeah, everybody's crisis at home, everyone has a budget going up, yes, and yeah.
It's gonna find it.
Everything what?
Everything's going up with the tariffs, clients person, it's really doing, it's not.
I just agree with that, I'm I'm in our.
It's still.
Our increase, yeah, so. So what's the wiggle room for?
Let me plug in three thousand dollars for the portage on. We'll put that under recreation. Yeah, it's still a point zero zero eight cent decrease in rate.
So it's still going down?
Still going down, yes.
So we're good.
We can now, we said now we're in.
And and believe me, I, this again, and if you think I'm not showing a number, this is why this is exercise is so important, because look at what we learned and what what we came out with, and we actually got lower than we actually need.
Thank you, Tim.
I'm not looking for praise, believe me, I'm just saying that it's, as a budget person, this is something that I'm dispossessed about.
So we have a budget we're gonna introduce on the tenth, eleventh, eleventh, it's a Friday, right?
So why are we doing that, why would we introduce on Monday? The fourteenth.
Cause he's not here on the fourteenth.
Yeah, he's gonna be gone.
Does he need to be here for introduction?
He needs to be here to introduce the budget, yes.
Well, what, do we, do we? Oh, do we need to be here to introduce the budget, or introduce by Zoom?
Yes. Oh, you can introduce by Zoom.
So here's my question, do we have to wait until the eleventh, or can we do it soon, or do you need more time?
He has just noticed it.
I know, I need some.
Oh, 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 oh.
He needs some time to reconcile.
I already have that, I said, I have to give it to you already.
Okay, 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 I just didn't understand the process.
And I'm, I'm gone.
Yeah, cause we figured.
And you're gone next week, okay.
Okay, so the eleventh is when we're gonna introduce.
At four.
I mean, could, it's not possible to introduce on the eighth, is it?
On the eighth?
Monday night, my next meeting.
No, the fourteenth.
Oh, no, it's like we don't have it, it's Saturday, my next meeting is the fourteenth, so it has to be before that by law, so.
Oh, with fourteenth, it's on the.
Well, it has to, yeah.
So the eleventh, so we schedule it for four o'clock in the afternoon on the eleventh, yeah, right?
Yes. Yes.
Exactly, that's enough time.
We're good.
Yes.
I'm good.
I'm asking you.
I'm good, yes. I'm good, yes.
I'm asking you.
You're you're, I mean, cause you need to time the bill with, send it to me.
Put it all in, I just have to get it to the orderings now, and I'm gonna do it once over and make sure.
So Bill, thank you, and thank you for for indulging, and thank you for like making, giving us a try, appreciate it. Thank all, we'll do so, I'll be fine. Go through this, I just I just think that it, you know, it's important and being honest, being honest, thank you.
And we still believe in things.
Yes, yes. Even more. So can we adjourn for?
Yeah, I'm sorry, no, my change of address, I have to open it up when I come in. Anything from the public, she just speak, you have three minutes of the best from Jordan. Uh, and I'm holding you to it, cause it's eight o'clock at night, cause we're all hungry. All public meetings must have a couple hundred.
But I'm asking, so.
It's on anything, no, on anything, on anything.
Oh. Okay.
Seeing none, they have a mercy to mature?
I'll move, park a second.
All favor?
Hi.
Okay.
Thank you, that's what I'm starting.